Let's go. Ready? Good afternoon. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Shanier, Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. For the record, Councilmember Warren will be absent this evening, and I do expect Councilmember Ashby momentarily.
Very good. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Jevé, if you would help lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Let's all rise. Welcome, sir.
Over the heart salute pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'm going to, without objection, we want to do a couple special presentations, the consent calendar, then we'll do public testimony on items not on the agenda. That's okay. I'm sorry. Do we have a report from closed session, Madam City Attorney?
There's nothing to report on.
Nothing to report on. Thank you so much. All right. Just a moment here. So it is my privilege here to ask Carrie Wood, please come forward. Where's Carrie? How are you? Carrie is with the Regional Foundation, correct?
Correct.
And I would like to present to you, on behalf of the Foundation, a resolution recognizing May the 3rd, which is just two days away.
Right.
As the big day of giving in Sacramento. And of course, you know what the usual line is, that every day is the day of giving.
Right.
In Sacramento, and it's true because we're a very giving community. But May 3rd is the day set aside every year to focus on the great work that our nonprofit and philanthropic community does in Sacramento. And with the leadership of the Regional Foundation, getting the word out and all of the organizing, last year or over, since 2013, the big day of giving has raised over $23 million for over 600 area nonprofits from over 40,000 donors in Sacramento. And what is the, what is the single-year record, if you know that off the top?
Yes. Last year, we raised 7.2 million, and we hope to beat that this year.
Well, we need to.
Absolutely.
That's the goal every year, right? It needs to get larger and larger. And what this is, is a 24-hour giving challenge, starting at midnight on the 3rd and ending at 11:59, that aims to raise, again, unrestricted money for over 585 nonprofits across the region and to engage more donors. You know, we often say government can't and maybe shouldn't do everything, and it really is a partnership. And oftentimes, the nonprofit community steps up when government can't do something or should do something and doesn't. And it goes many, many ways, but without this effort and without the millions of dollars raised, untold numbers of people would not be doing as well.
Exactly.
And I know I will be out there on Thursday morning during your opening hours.
Right.
Maybe not at midnight, but early in the morning on May the 3rd. And I hope that this is the best day of giving yet, and thank you and the Regional Foundation for all your leadership. We have a certificate, and I'm going to bring it down to you, and we can take a picture. Is that all right?
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Please give Carrie a big hand. Will you do this anyway?
Okay.
Does somebody want to?
You want to take our picture?
With your phone.
Yeah.
That okay?
Sounds good.
Landry will take a photo.
Here, you take this.
All right.
You hold this.
Glad to see you.
We'll get him.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Council, Vice Mayor Hanson, you have a presentation to make, sir, as I understand it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. It's really an honor for me to recognize somebody who's been on our staff for a while, Gary Hayden. Gary, why don't you come forward? And I believe your wife Patty is with us today, too. Patty, you're welcome to join him, or you can let him stand alone, as the cheese sometimes does. Gary, you joined us in 2006, if I remember right.
Correct.
And you've done innumerable park projects, helping to shape our park system. Not quite the great Robert Moses.
[laughing]
Many of our parks were already built, but you, you brought a keen intellect, a passion for what would serve the public best. And you also delivered great projects with limited resources during a lot of adversity. I think it's no secret that the city in between 2006 and now has gone through a lot of change, but also a lot of sacrifice because we didn't have the resources, really, to take care of our parks. But during that time, you found ways, state grants, you found community allies, all sorts of resources that we didn't know we had, and you helped make things happen. And in particular, I know that you helped lead the process for the 207-acre Natomas Regional Park, which is a new addition, you're a little bit of Robert Moses, maybe. But also helped us from redoing ponds in our parks, which were safety and health hazards, to creating Brook Street Bark Park and the soon-to-be mill, Leotata Floyd Farms Project at the Mill on Broadway. So tremendous, tremendous career in history. And Patty, we're sad that we have to say goodbye to him. So if you get tired of having him around, he's always welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah. Gary, would you like to say something? I'm sure other members.
Yes, sir. I would like to say just a few things. I've been very lucky. I've been lucky in the staff I've had, and I've been lucky in the directors I've had, starting with Cassandra Jennings as the interim director, then Jen Combs, and of course, Chris Conlan. And if you had told me that I would have told you that the best boss I ever had was a retired combat veteran full-bird Marine Colonel, I would have told you you were crazy. Nevertheless, it is true. Chris is the best boss I've ever had. He is a leader and a, and an administrator, and he's trained his staff well. And I have a lot of hope, and I see the promise in Shannon as the interim director. She's doing a great job, and although it may be very hard to fill Chris's shoes, she's going to do it. And then I'd like to say, although I'm leaving, I'm not going away. And I want to make it clear, because it was a little unclear this morning when I talked to Councilmember Ashby, that in my capacity as a licensed landscape architect, a licensed architect, and a certified planner, I'll be happy to volunteer time to any of you. I'm not interested in working booths and things, but I would be happy to volunteer any effort that you need some help on. I have historic, at least an 11-year historic knowledge of this place, and I'm just, I'm just thankful that I had this job. It's been the best job I've ever had. Thank you, Gary. Wow, fabulous. We've got a couple other members that want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to you, Gary. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, you know, I don't mean to be exclusive, but I think you're my favorite staff member. I, I've worked with you for eight years in my city service on the Parks Commission as council member, but even before that, when I was with RPNA, working on Glen Hall Park. You're just fabulous, man. I mean, what can I say? You're a friend, you're a colleague, and, you know, in parks architecture, you're a mentor. So you've been great for the city. And I know that your offer to help, you know, as a retired annuitant is real, because you've already offered to help out with building a new snack shack at Silverella Field. You've offered your services. So you clearly love the city. I just want you to know the city loves you, too.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Harris. I'd just like to make one thing clear. I will be coming back as what we call in my office a retired irritant, but I'm going to work strictly on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. What I'm offering to do is if you have a project, like, like Councilmember Harris has, where we're doing a snack shack, and I'm just going to do the drawings for him to kind of fill my day, I'd be willing to help any of you, because this place has given me a lot, and I certainly would like to give back.
You're going to fill your day, and I'll fill your cup.
Thank you. Councilman Shanier.
Very briefly, I just want to say thank you. We've worked on a lot of projects together. Gary taught me how to be patient, because things take a while.
Yes, it does.
Ultimately, we got them all done, and it's all much appreciated, and on behalf of the district, that you did a lot of work, and we appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Gary and Patty, will you join me in the well for a photo?
All right.
Oh, sorry, Rick. Sorry.
Not done here. That's where Jennings. But I had Getta first and Jennings, whatever. Either way.
Oh, Gary, again, I just, I can't thank you enough for that amazing park over in Artibio Guerrero Park. You guys led a place where there was no park before, and now there's a lot of activity there. It's one of our best-attended movie nights, too. And not only that, but again, on Glenbrook Park, when we drove over there for the Little League Parade, the mayor didn't even recognize it from all the good work that you guys have done from when he was Councilmember of District 6. It looks amazing. Thank you again for all the work you're doing out there.
You're very welcome. Excellent. Councilmember Jennings?
So I told you you weren't going anywhere.
Yes, sir.
We had that conversation at a community meeting, and I told you that you weren't going anywhere, because you have too much institutional knowledge, you're too good at what you do, and your heart isn't in the right place. You don't know how to say no, and I appreciate that, because sometimes I come up with some pretty crazy ideas, but then you find some incredibly crazy ways in order to make those ideas happen. And they're not just ideas that I want, but they're ideas that the community wants. And so I appreciate your can-do attitude, your incredible spirit. I'm glad that you're not going away. I'm glad you're still here with us, willing to volunteer if necessary, willing to work whenever necessary.
Yes, sir.
So I hear you loud and clear, and we're going to make sure we put you to work.
Okay. Sounds good. Councilman Carr.
Gary, thank you. I think we've... Just wanted to say that I wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Sort of. And the, the projects that you have initiated and completed in this city are remarkable, from district to district. And I hope you get some satisfaction from that, knowing that you have changed people's lives, and they won't know your name.
[laughing]
They don't know us, we're the council people, but you are the one who did it, from impossible tasks like putting in that Boys and Girls Club so rapidly, the dugout, figuring out a way to finance the dugout at the All Abilities Field, to kitchen at the Pennell Center Swimming Pool. It's just project after project after project, all different, but all having a meaningful impact on people's lives, and I thank you and wish you the best. If there's anything we can do at all, please let us know. And I'll be calling on you as well.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. The best part of my profession is watching people use the facilities that we've developed. That is, that's a reward in and of itself. And every night when I take the bus, I go by the dog park, and everybody is out there. I wasn't, Steve convinced me that we needed a dog park. I wasn't so sure, but now I know we did. So I've learned as well. Well, Gary, I only regret that I didn't get an opportunity to work with you closely and build a park in my, well, I don't have a district, but I did, when I did, back in the day. Mr. Mayor, it's always been my goal here to stay under the radar and not let the mayor learn my name or the city manager. I knew Howard before he became city manager, so I failed there, but nevertheless, thank you. All right.
Patty, Shannon, you ready? Come on, Eugene. Couple sets here. Let's do it on three. One, two, three. And then this one on three. One. Two. Three. Knock it in. That's good.
All right. Thank you very much. That's a good start to the evening here. Let us begin with the consent calendar, please. Are there items on the consent calendar that members want to remove or to discuss? Move approval? Moved and seconded on the consent calendar is...
Mr. Mayor, I do have three speakers on the side.
We do have three speakers. Let's do that, then. Yes, of course.
No, I would like to read into the record on item number 14. The council district is six and not four, and that's item number 14. I have three speakers. The first one is Pastor Gainsborough on item three, then Brenda Anderson on eight and 11, and then Macworthy on three, 12, and 13. Is Pastor Gainsborough here? Then following Pastor Gainsborough is Brenda Anderson, and then Macworthy.
Which one is he speaking to?
On item number three.
Three.
Just a reminder, Pastor, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Can they enlarge that up? Good. This sketch painting of a very famous story. Michelangelo did a great sculpture and art of the person holding up Goliath's head there. It's the story of David and Goliath. And when I saw item number three, that they want to expand the not-to-exceed amount of 4.1 million up to an amount almost 250 times, 250 percent, two and a half times that amount to 10.4 million. I'm not against the artwork and design investment, but I would like to encourage that there be some multi-ethnic artwork sculpt, sculpting being done there. I'd also like to see some, some type of a statue, maybe the city would put it out to bid, of a statue of a man lifting up somebody that was crippled or homeless, lying on the street, something showing the best of humanity in the artwork and in the design, maybe in a mosaic, something artistic, and yet something speaking to the heart of the hundreds of thousands of people or millions that you hope will go to the new convention center. And something that I hope when I speak to public comment...
Pastor, your two minutes are complete. Please make your final comment.
Deal with the death toll goal that I'll speak about in a few minutes.
The next speaker is Brenda Anderson, and then Mac Elworthy. Ms. Anderson here?
Hi. My name is Brenda Anderson. I'm a private citizen advocate, not associated with anything. I believe this is a comment. I'm here to keep hope alive and possibly save lives of at least you. I believe that we have resources and programs for those that qualify, but for those that do not qualify, we need to restructure them, give them the transition they need from antisocial behavior that they think is the norm, to filter them into our social system. Right now, they're out there in the wind, and we noticed, and we've seen it. We don't want any more lives to go, so we must save them, and we must do something. You announced that you had programs and resources, but unless you have the home committed, I'm going to reiterate this at many meetings, you will not re-leave that child. And so your programs have got to touch home, not just the child. I'm going to say it again next meeting. You need to understand that you start now. It's hard to raise a child. All of us know this. So try very hard to picture one that's raised in the wrong environment or the wrong perspective. So tell yourself what can you do with these resources and program to transition them from another country, like ghetto to the world, different language, different lifestyle, different perspective, different reaction to words, emotions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Mac Elworthy on items three, 12, and 13.
Good afternoon, people. Here we go. That's what I refer to pimping the people. Now, here you're going to transfer $4 million, up to $10 million, back to designer building, Mayor, when you could take that same $10 million and build 500 units and rent them for $1,000 a month. That's $6 million of your income. Where are your head, man? You ain't going to get nothing back for that $10 million to design a building? That's not saying build a building, people. That's saying to architect, designing. That's friendship money that will never come back to this town. Wake up. You need to do something about things like that. Then we go to 13. Let's look at 12. Authorities pay money back to the water people. An engineer sits right there, and I asked him a simple question about a water meter, and he couldn't answer. But yes, still, you're going to put the taxpayers' money back into this. Wake up. Then we got the water grants. People, you, you're using the folks. You're using the general public here. You're not helping them. You're using them. You're using the people here. Wake up. And face reality, you need jobs here in this town. You don't need no more pimping. You need jobs. You need to quit pimping the people. Give these people jobs, because now they are paying for utilities instead of landlords, because the landlords are out of town. Those are your friends, the developers. Why can't you see what's going on here? I just don't understand it. Where is the business head? This ain't no political. This racketeering. This racketeering and pimping the people, that's all this. That's what I tell you. A whole House government would do that. This is a whole House government, because this is a welfare state. That's the reason this happened, people. Educate the people out here, and they can stand here and oppose as I oppose. I oppose everything on this consent calendar.
I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. The consent calendar passes with a vote of seven, I think. We'll leave the roll open for Councilmember Ashby to add on without...
Councilmember Getta's also out of the room.
And Councilmember Getta is out of the room as well, without objection. Okay? So I want to turn it over to an unagendized item, our city manager, to make a happy announcement here.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I'm very pleased to announce the newest member to our city family. Last week, I had the, the honor of appointing an assistant city manager to lead our departments in the Office of Innovation and Economic Development and Community Development Department, and that's Mr. Michael Jasso. Mr. Jasso comes to us from Chicago, where he served as the chief for the Bureau of Economic Development for Cook County. He also served as the chief development officer, I think I got that right, as for the Chicago Housing Authority. We're very fortunate to have him come join our team with his background and experience to lead our efforts here, and quite frankly, it was, we had to twist his arm to leave the snow to come of the California sun. So can I ask Mr. Jasso to come up and say a few words?
Well, Michael, welcome.
Welcome.
We are very excited to have you and look forward to great things together.
Well, first of all, good afternoon, Mayor, city manager, council members. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. It really is, so Howard said he had to twist my arm, and it was really a tough choice, because it was really about the fact that Sacramento is an amazing community, of which I'm truly honored and proud to become a part of, and then just leaving things that we all know, such as home and family. I'm very excited by this opportunity to build, to work with each of you and all our residents and businesses, to really build an economy here in Sacramento that is meaningful to everyone in Sacramento, both our residents and businesses alike, and inclusive of everyone, kind of here and in the region. I think it's a tremendous challenge, tremendous opportunity. I think the city is uniquely poised, and I look forward to being a part of that growth into the future.
Fabulous. First, to many public conversations and one-on-one conversation about the most important opportunity we face here in our city, and that is to grow a more diverse economy and provide more opportunity for our people, especially from the neighborhoods. And we're really glad that you're joining us at such an important, exciting time. And congratulations to the city manager for Howard Chan for another inspired choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Welcome. All right. We now have public testimony for items not on the agenda. We have 15 speakers. Let us go.
Mayor, I do have 16 speakers now, and I would like to remind the audience here and at home that this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website or viewed later in the archive files. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found in the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned in prior to the beginning of each item, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules and procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available from the clerk. And please silence your cell phones and other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights-on video equipment. And parking validations can also be picked up from the city clerk at the front of the room. So our first speaker is Joan Marie, then Cynthia Kay, then Michael Voy. Is Joan here?
Evening, or afternoon, I should say.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Joan Marie, and I'm the owner of Compassion Central, a director of compassionate women and girls, and co-founder with Laura Hanson of Compassionate Capital Region. We're also both representatives for Compassionate California, each as a part of the International Charter for Compassion. We chose to call ourselves Compassionate Capital Region with the vision and intent that once Sacramento, our state capital, agreed, then it will be easy and natural for surrounding cities to declare and define themselves as compassionate cities as well, creating a snowball effect in becoming a compassionate state. Last year, at the July 25, 2017 city council meeting, Laura Hanson and myself presented a resolution in becoming compassionate Sacramento, creating a plan of compassion and action for our community. You, as the city council, unanimously agreed to allow Sacramento to declare itself as a compassionate city. Sacramento is deeply suffering, and we are but a microcosm of our nation and the world as a whole. As citizens, we can join together through the thread of compassion to listen, understand, support, act accordingly, and heal collectively. Mayor Steinberg, we've heard the call from your Capitol Public Radio interview for healers to receive training before stepping forward. Through Compassionate Capital Region, there are over 60 organizations who have come together with the shared vision and creating an edge in effectively implementing dynamic change through education, racial healing, and creating empowered options so violence becomes our last instead of our first resort. It is appropriate that Compassionate Capital Region, in service with Compassionate Sacramento, be involved in the design and implementation of these trainings. We have not been able to officially celebrate the power.
Marie, your two minutes has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Kay.
Follow through with you. Okay.
women and girls, and co-founder with Laura Hanson of Compassionate Capital Region. We're also both representatives for Compassionate California, each as a part of the International Charter for Compassion. We chose to call ourselves Compassionate Capital Region with the vision and intent that once Sacramento, our state capital, agreed, then it will be easy and natural for surrounding cities to declare and define themselves as compassionate cities as well, creating a snowball effect in becoming a compassionate state. Last year, at the July 25, 2017 city council meeting, Laura Hanson and myself presented a resolution in becoming compassionate Sacramento, creating a plan of compassion and action for our community. You, as the city council, unanimously agreed to allow Sacramento to declare itself as a compassionate city. Sacramento is deeply suffering, and we are but a microcosm of our nation and a world as a whole. As citizens, we can join together through the thread of compassion to listen, understand, support, act accordingly, and heal collectively. Mayor Steinberg, we've heard the call from your Capitol Public Radio interview for healers to receive training before stepping forward. Through Compassionate Capital Region, there are over 60 organizations who have come together with the shared vision and creating an edge in effectively implementing dynamic change through education, racial healing, and creating empowered options so violence becomes our last instead of our first resort. It is appropriate that Compassionate Capital Region, in service with Compassionate Sacramento, be involved in the design and implementation of these trainings. We have not been able to officially celebrate the power.
Marie, your two minutes has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cynthia Kay.
Follow through with you, okay?
Our next speaker is Cynthia Kay, then Michael Voy, then Greg Galvanovich, and then Alexander Clark.
We are now moving into the hottest time of the year. I've already had pneumonia and been hospitalized for it. Do I have to look forward to heat stroke and being hospitalized for that? I've been looking for a place since the 31st of January. I haven't been able to find any that I can afford to move into. It is so limited what they have available for seniors. You are going to end up with more and more seniors on the street. They can't afford the rents. There are not enough places for them to move to. They're going to end up in the hospital, just as I did. The volunteer organizations try their best, but they nowhere help actually get to the root of the problem. I can get in a bus and ride around Sacramento and look for a place, but I can tell you, most of them are not going to give me a place. My Social Security doesn't pay enough, so they don't want me. What does this say to the seniors in this community if homelessness is what they have to look forward to, if heat stroke is what they have to look forward to at this time? You need to understand, we have to solve this problem now, not tomorrow, not next week, not next month, not next year. We need to solve it now. People are going to be dying on the street. You need to do something to keep this from happening.
Ms. Kay, Kay, excuse me, Ms. Kay, is there something we can specifically do to help you?
I know a place to live.
Well, that's what I want to see, if we can, if we can hook you up tonight with somebody from our city team to see if there's any way that we can help you.
I would love to.
Excuse me. Go ahead, Ms. Kay, go ahead. I'm asking you a question.
In most cases, they want me, my income to be double the amount of the rent. I don't have that.
I understand, but there's got to be a way here. Are you out on the street now? Are you homeless now?
Actually, I have a Christian family that has me in a room. They're leaving in June.
Okay. Well, can, we have your number. We're going to have somebody from the city management team call you tomorrow and see if we can sit down one-on-one and see if we can help you bridge from where you are now until a more secure place or more permanent place in the month of June.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Michael Voy, Greg Galvanovich, and then Alexander Clark.
Evening, Mayor, Council.
Voy.
I'm going to return to the timeline of the Joseph Mann. Just a couple of points, though. On February the 2nd of 2017, the district attorney declined to charge the officers in the Mann shooting. February the 3rd, the city settled lawsuit. I presume that was a wrongful death lawsuit that was settled. So the catalyst for that was the DA's decision. Now, I've read Ann Schubert's opinion, or what I think it's the opinion, it's on the DA's website, and it's well-crafted, but there are some things that, when I read it, there are some things that perhaps weren't addressed. And that's why the timeline is so important to me, because at the time that the city settled the lawsuit, the Internal Affairs investigation, as my understanding, wasn't complete. And then in October, which is October the 26th, 2017, according to the B, there was a report that the Mann officers were no longer on the force. So about six, seven, eight months go by, and I presume that the investigation is open until that time, and then there's a determination as to what happened with the officers. So I don't know what happened there, and it raises questions in my mind, because did Ann Schubert have all the information? If this, if this investigation is held open...
While your two minutes is complete, will you make your final comment?
Well, it'll come in installments. I guess that'll be, it will just drag it out.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Galvanovich, then Alexander Clark, and then Mackenzie. Is Greg here? Next speaker is Alexander Clark. Mr. Clark here. Mackenzie, as Mackenzie arrived. LB is the next speaker.
Why are you walking away, Mayor? You need to hear this. We are at war. This is a war of conscience. This is a war of attrition. Believe me, we will not back down, and our conscience is guiding us. So in time of wars, we don't need to ask permission. In times of war, murderers, assassins, rapists are exempt from prosecution. Women, children, elders are collateral. In times of war, cries of hunger are unheard. In times of war, the rich are preferred, safe in their homes, safe from the storms. The poor undesirables are vilified. They are blamed for spiritual failings, demonized for their afflictions, as they sleep in the rain, away from view, hidden from moral citizens. That's a quote. In time, in time of war, the gods are silent or become background noise, only summoned when death is near, fear striking the heart that we are all spiritually dying in times of war. There are no ceremonies, no flowers. The dead are sometimes unburied, eyes open to the empty and unresponsive skies. In times of death, brother turn against each other, fighting for humanity that has taken flight, desperately hoping for salvation. The blood flow like an angry raging river. Tears follow thereafter, washing the wounds we inflict on each other. We gain nothing but recognition that the demons, the saints, the victims, the heroes. The story repeat, the characters change, we slowly learn our cues, we play all the parts of the same game.
Your two minutes is, will you make your final comment?
Depending which story.
Our next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough, then Juve.
LB, your time is up. LB, your time is up. You've been warned once, you've been warned twice, LB. You will now be asked to leave the council chamber. Sergeants, please escort LB out of the council chamber.
We have been at war, my friends, and brothers and sisters. We are all wanting to have a promise and laugh.
You've been warned. Please remove her from the council chamber.
We will breathe endlessly, as long as more, as we are.
Pastor Gainsborough.
Our next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough.
Be nice. I'm watching you. Let her go. Be nice. Be nice, ma'am, ma'am, because you're going to... No, don't do it. Easy, easy. Come on, easy. You're off the table. Don't hurt her.
Pastor Gainsborough. Pastor Gainsborough.
Our next speaker is Pastor Gainsborough, then Juve, and then Elizabeth McDaniel. Pastor.
Who's after Pastor Gainsborough, Madam Clerk?
After Pastor Gainsborough is Juve, then Elizabeth McDaniel.
Pastor, your time has started. Mr. Wake, if you shout out from the audience, we'll also ask you to stop that. It's against our conduct rules.
Do you expect me to speak over her screams of pain?
Pastor, your time is running.
Your time is running out. God, God Almighty, who gave you 10,000 heartbeats today, is saying to you, Angelique, to you, Alan, to you, Jeff, and to you, Steve Hanson, to you, Mindy, and to you, Mayor Steinberg, to you, Howard, to you, Jay Shenear, to you, Eric, to you, Rick Jennings, and to Larry Carr, those of you who call you Bible-believing, Tanakh-believing Jews, those of you who dare to call yourselves bloodwashed, born again, bought by the cross of Jesus, gospel-believing Christians. 118 people died on your streets last week. I went to the triage shelter today. They're talking about closing out at the end of May. You say $400,000 is too much for a month for 200 homeless people, but meanwhile, you passed $6 million more of design money for your convention center. Hypocrites! Jesus said, you hypocrites, you hypocrites, who put on, blow a trumpet in public and love the chief seats at the city council. Jesus said, whoa, 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 unto you. God has got your number. What will...
Pastor, thank you.
Esther.
Thank you for your comments, Pastor Gainsborough.
Our next speaker is Juve. After Juve is Elizabeth McDaniel, then Richard Wake, then Brenda Anderson.
Pardon me just one moment. Thank you. Go ahead.
Morning and afternoon. My name is Juve. For the last couple of weeks, I went off on you guys because of the way I feel. I'm keeping a shone sweet, I ain't going to cuss. I must say this one thing. Either you, you, or you, or the day we're back, and you got one and a half year, because in 2020, not when I win, if I win. When I win, I mean, to become, going to become city manager, mayor, or city clerk. Because you see, I do one thing each and every single day, 24/7. I connect with the people. I'm the one that's on the trends with these people. And either way, you hold up a cell phone, it's not no gun. And if I am going to vote, I'm going to vote for no fiddleups, because it's like he said before, he's going to actually do his job, which is convict killer cops that took my best friend away from me. And it's just like the saying, as eye for an eye, tooth for a tooth. It's either we get justice or no peace. And trust me, y'all thought Juan the King was bad in L.A.? This is the reason, there's a reason why it's called South Side Iraq. You kill my best friend, you kill my brother, blood will be shut sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth McDaniel, then Richard Wake, then Brenda Anderson. Elizabeth?
I'm so grateful the mayor is present, because I really needed him to be present for this.
Welcome, Ms. McDaniel.
Right there. God bless you all. All righty, okay. This may be the issue for me today. The network and assault has begun, has been launched against me in an attempt to make me homeless. Remember, I talked about the network and other computers and being manipulated? Well, I go to the bank today. After 25 years, there's no money there to pay my rent after this landlord-tenant situation that I spoke on the last time. However, I will be paying the $800 tomorrow, not the threat that I was given, as other tenants were told to disregard the confusing notice, and there was no resolve as well for me. And I, this is to whom it may concern, you clench your fist at God, just like the Titanic, it will sink if you don't repent. Jay, there's blood on your hands. I thank God for ordering my steps. The property I live in is yours, correct? Didn't know that. Wow. You want me out, yet it's a blessing that I'm in to pray for the tenants, the management, and maintenance crew. Yes, they've shared their woes with me also. They feel us in a cult they're working for. My prayer for you is that the Lord will let thy kingdom come, and his will be done in your life. Also, the love of money is the root of all evil. I had a word for each of you in the district, but because of my two minutes, I'm just speaking directly to Jay. So Jay, I would hope that we could come to an ethical resolve regarding my...
Ms. McDaniel, just by decorum, address me. We've paused your time for a second.
Okay, sir. Now you interrupting my, okay, we stopped. Okay, good. I just want to ask the mayor person, can I please have a meeting? I have major information to share with you with the mayor, District 7 and District 2. I need to speak with you all if I can have a meeting set up. And the phone, whoever called me claiming to be from the city, when I called the number back, it was disconnected. I know about call fake or ID, and the person couldn't even speak with an intelligent level to act like they knew anything. It didn't go anywhere. So can I have that meeting?
We're happy to get our lead staff, our staffs together to sit with you.
Please do, sir. I would really appreciate it. God bless you all. Continue to pray. Love you all. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Mr. Wake?
Our next speaker is Richard Wake, then Brenda Anderson, then Mac Elworthy, and then Mary Tappel. Mr. Wake?
Yeah, I'm calling here tonight to speak on all of your endorsements of Ann Marie Schubert for district attorney. I was shocked when I got my ballot statement in the mail to see that Mayor Steinberg's name was on that ballot statement. You know, four years ago, when Maggie Krell ran for district attorney, many of you that are sitting up here endorsed her. I don't know what changed from four years ago to think that Ann Marie Schubert is doing such a fine job. But you know, two of you, Councilmember Guerra and the Vice Mayor, sit on the Democratic Central Committee as members from Supervisor District 1. And here you are as Democrats going against the very same endorsement of Noah Phillips that you were elected to uphold as members of the Central Committee in Supervisor District 1. You guys should be removed from the county central committee, and I've urged them to take a look at that. You are doing the Democrats a disservice of your supervisor district when you're doing that. Now, you know, reasonable people can disagree of who, of which Democrat should be endorsed in some races, but I've seen some honorable people sit up here on the city council, ranging from Bob Matsui to Ann Rudin to Heather Fargo to Deborah Ortiz to Dave Jones to Terry Castanis. The list can go on and on and on. I've been doing this for 30 years. I'm not an expert, but you know, my faculty advisor at Sac State as a government major was the late Mayor Joe Serna. I don't recall any of those people endorsing a Republican for anything, and I have a pretty good institutional memory. You guys really ought to be ashamed of yourselves for endorsing this district attorney that won't prosecute Nazis, that stabbed people at the Capitol, that has never prosecuted a killer cop, and that, and that is taking all the money from the conservative law enforcement endorsements. There's a place for all of you. Go to the Secretary of State's website and reregister to vote as Republicans.
Thank you, Mr. Wake. Next speaker.
The Anderson, calling Ms. Anderson is Mac Elworthy, then Mary Tappel.
Welcome, Ms. Anderson.
This is regard to summer camps and intern programs that you have. I'm going to just read you a little bit from the Brookings Institute of Research and Development that did a study on Sacramento. Lighting growth of export industries, stark educational and earnings disparities between white, black, and Hispanic residents. Investment needs in transportation and broadband infrastructure to connect residents to opportunity, according to Amy Lou, Vice President of Brookings and Director of Metropolitan Policy Programs. When I was in the military, one of the biggest, biggest crucial thing was no one left behind. You guys, we've left some people behind. And this is not a criticism or pointing a finger. It's saying, we have an opportunity to right a wrong. We have an opportunity to stretch out that hand. We have an opportunity to be constructive and innovative, to put something on the table to make a difference. So I'm asking... So I'm asking you to give a lot of consideration to being able to help somebody that needs your help. They can't do it themselves. Their mother and fathers, their legal guardians, don't know the way. We've got to do it. I'm very sorry if y'all look bored and don't want to hear it and tired of hearing it and don't want to listen, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, Mary Tappel, then Frederick A. Gale, and our final speaker will be T. Whitney.
First of all, this is the fourth time I've seen added to the Browns Act. Dale, this is your problem. Bias at this podium from you all is a violation of Constitution. Attorney, you see this with your own eyes, and this would be all the records we need to file a lawsuit against this city. Now, the court, check on your rights to tell somebody when their time up. You are the court. Go back to the county, Dale. When we was over there, you used those speaker cards to let people speak that you know first. Now, that's a total violation. It's on camera, what I'm saying. But we're going to go further than that, people. We're going to look at the case of the East Bay rapists. Dwayne Lowe got a helicopter, and the East Bay rapists died. A white man on the force of the county changed DNA for $1,000 to $2,000. He's in jail here. Now, when we look at, the majority of the people in that area were that age as dead, where the man got shot in the chest, with him and his son were chasing somebody. I worked in that area. I done surveillance in that area for the woman that I worked for 22 years, which I carried the key to her house and stove when she got off from work. Mark Carney and Root to Walnut, that's where I counted cop, and we advised her to go there if somebody was sitting in front of her house. Now, we want to know that when going to house parties and some other parties in that area for older white women, the young white women's door screen wasn't locked. That's what's sad, right there. We went to, at tiny country, there was places that we went to big-time parties that people laughed about it. But Dwayne Lowe got a helicopter, he went to the State Department. You got to be careful what you're doing here. She wouldn't have raised that if it hadn't been election time. When this boy got killed here, she done nothing. This is, this is the situation that you gonna have to wake up in this town and understand because this is...
Mr. Worthy, your two minutes is completely, you make your final comments.
This is dictatorship, and we know it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Tappel, then Frederick A. Gale, and our final speaker is T. Whitney.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council. I'll try to start first with what I didn't get to last time. Maybe I'll get through more of it in the two minutes. I wanted to quote our former poet laureate, the great Maya Angelou, saying, "Nothing works unless you do." I think you'll notice that with a lot of our programs in the city. Everybody needs to do their part, whether it's only on a volunteer basis. Everybody can contribute something. Now, I found it ironic that to hear, hear that our current DA, Ann Marie Schubert, she has so many outreach programs, and yet there's people there demonstrating against her, yelling obscenities. They might be doing the extreme irony and disservice to be yelling at the very same victim-witness advocates who shepherd abused kids and some women who are the victims of bad domestic violence through the court system to protect their rights for their future lives. And the people who actually, the victim-witness advocates are often those people who are helping people on to a much better life, particularly young children. This should matter to everybody. I have, again, some of the teens killed in, between 2007 and 2017 June, when the Sacramento Bee article came out that I quoted before. Again, these, this Sacramento death rate of 114 teens during this time period is a murder rate higher than state and national averages for this age group. Nearly all were killed by guns, and this is a much higher rate of death than the federal rate, and young people here are twice as likely to die of homicide as those of any other age group. This is, again, from a Sacramento Bee article that came out in 2017 in June. It's by Ryan Lilis or Lilis and Nathaniel Levine. And thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you, Ms. Tappel.
Our next speaker is Frederick A. Gale Jr., and then T. Whitney.
Welcome, Mr. Gale.
The recognition you gave to the gentleman who designed the park, you mentioned Moses in that conversation, and it kind of remind me of Mother Golda when she said that other Moses, if he had gone south instead of north, we would have oil. But then you mentioned Robert Moses, St. Lee Hanley rebuilt New York City and the surrounding area of New York. But undoubtedly, he's a mighty fine fellow to be mentioned. Robert Moses could walk on water. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gale, thank you so much. Our next speaker is Ms. Whitney. Hold on, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, if you could just let them switch places first, or do whatever you guys are going to do.
Ms. Whitney, you're next. Please, please speak.
Okay. Can I? Thanks. On April 12th, when two Black Lives Matter, when two women were arrested at the DA's office for protesting the death of Stefan Clark and the lack of the DA's response to that, both of the women that were arrested were friends of mine. I hope all of you have the opportunity to have a friend in your life that's so extraordinary that like, you feel like you've known them forever and that you, that you know that you're going to love them forever. And Ebony is that person for me, and she's a transgender woman, and to know that she was locked up in process as a male is absolutely sickening. The danger and risks that that put her life in is absolutely unacceptable. The reason I'm speaking about this today is because I know that this council may not be real progressive on a lot of issues, but I know that our mayor has been a true friend to the LGBT community unquestionably and unwaveringly throughout the years. And I want to make sure that this city and that our county holds our sheriff and our police department and the way the jail is operated accountable for having a policy in place to make sure that transgender people are protected when they're in custody. It's only, it's only, the fact that it can, that this can be a catalyst for that change is important, because see, the National Lawyers Guild was involved. Black Lives Matter was involved. You had SAC Act on the ground. You had Black Women United that had connections behind the scenes in order, in order to get a hold of the mayor. That gave Ebony a protection, that your average transgender woman wouldn't get under any other circumstances if they were picked up, you know, for whatever, for whatever reason and processed on the male side. And I'm just asking that you guys consider that, that you consider the arrests should have never happened to begin with, and that if transgender people are arrested in the future in this town, that there's protections in place to make sure that they're safe when they're in custody.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Mr. Clark, you were called earlier. If you can conduct yourself appropriately, a couple of weeks ago, we had to have you removed from the chamber, so I just ask that you honor the and respect this place.
Minnesota, man, you should know how we act up there, man.
You have two minutes.
You from Minnesota, you know how we radical and up in the Midwest, man.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah. You must be mad. You big mad or small mad? But anyways, I actually jogged here, you know, so I actually had a good, you know, so I exercised when I actually jogged here, you know, so that I actually expected a couple of my allies to actually bring me here, but I decided that I had enough ambition enough to come here, because I feel like my voice matter. And just like I said, on Numbers of Cages, I feel like the LGBT community matter. I feel like the indigenous lives also matter. And my thing is, what I've been seeing so far is a lot of people taking a lot of thing, a lot of things and basically switching everything up. Y'all taking the focus off the death of Stefan Clark. So once again, you know what I'm saying, just like I asked Noah Phillips, what are y'all going to do about the officers that killed Stefan Clark? I mean, ain't nobody really haven't really answered that question. It's like y'all sit here and y'all allow people to come here every single weekend just for their voice to be heard, and everybody got their, you know what I'm saying, own issues, you know, that they compartmentalize. But my thing is, y'all got to understand that this boy was killed, and you know what I'm saying? Like, y'all got to be willing enough to bring some type of awareness to this situation, and y'all got to be able to convict those police officers that killed that boy, because y'all know, we know, that those people are guilty. And no damn way, shape, or form should they be allowed to work right now. You know what I'm saying? They shouldn't be at work, because if we was to commit that same crime, anybody, you know what I'm saying, that's, that's a citizen. You know what I'm saying? If we was to commit that same exact crime right now, if we was to kill a police officer, anybody of any color, anything like that, they'd try to hang us under the jail. But yet, then you got, you know what I'm saying, organizations like BLM and shit like that, they want to sit there and talk about they out in Florida. So once again, that also, you know what I'm saying, is putting a perspective of the people. Ask these organizations, what the fuck is $180,000, and why are these organizations able to advertise them being down in Florida? And since they so busy advertising that they got all this fucking money, and since they don't want me to hear so bad, and I know y'all don't want me to hear so bad, because I'm going to continue to talk about Stefan Clark. I'm going to continue to talk about the people who killed the murder. I'm going to continue...
Your time is up. Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, you are warned. Mr. Clark, thank you for your comments. Mr. Clark, we gave you a chance to speak. Please respect the chamber, Mr. Clark. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hanson. I do want to revisit the consent calendar, items 1 through 16. Both Councilmembers Guerra and Ashby were absent.
One second, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Ashby would like to say something. Councilmember?
Yeah, we're not really allowed to engage in dialogue at the, when, in public comment, but I think that this just really needs to be said, and so I'm going to say it. I know that when you came to speak to us about how the, how transgender women are treated, that it's, that there's a component of that that happened with the police department. But the sheriff piece that you're talking about is really, really important, and I can tell that you really want to address it and that you really want to understand that process and work to improve it. And I want to encourage you to do that, but it's important that you recognize that the jail is run by the county so that your advocacy goes to the right entity. I, I can tell when you stand up here that this is a friend you care deeply about and you really want to address this issue. I want you to be productive in that effort. This is a very progressive council, by the way, so I think you would have their support. But this isn't, this isn't the right support you need. That argument has to happen down the street a couple of blocks, and since I can tell that it is something deeply important to you, and I would agree with you, I think this whole council would agree with you, I want to encourage you to look into that at the right entity so that you can be effective in your advocacy. Okay, we're, I understand. I acknowledge that there's a component on the front end, but the, but the police, but the jail itself, yeah.
Good. Well, thank you. I think your testimony was appropriate and helpful, and I appreciate the clarification.
And Mr. Mayor, can I go back to the consent calendar? Both Councilmembers Guerra and Ashby were, had stepped out of the room, but I would like to get their vote on the consent calendar, items 1 through 16. Councilmember Ashby?
Aye.
Aye.
With Guerra. Thank you.
Good, thank you, yeah. I don't know if it's, that's the tradition at City Hall to leave open the roll, so to speak, when a member has to step out for minutes, the way we used to do in the legislature. I think it's appropriate.
As long as we read into the record.
Yeah, so some members don't miss votes for having to step out for a moment. Okay. We need a motion to continue file item 17, please.
Is it date specific, Mayor?
My notes do not, oh, to May the 8th, yes.
I'll make a motion that we move that file item to May the 8th. Second?
Good. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye opposed, abstain. Let's move to file item 18. Who's presenting on 18?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Evan Compton. I'm a principal planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is a request to undo a recent change to our Capitol View protection map. The change was made in December as part of a bundle of zoning code changes. The bundle included a modification to the height map in the Capitol View protection area, which is in the downtown. It was intended to mirror some state-imposed requirements for parcels on the south and southeastern side of the Capitol, but this modification has created inconsistencies in applying the Planning and Development Code. So on March 22nd, the Planning and Design Commission forwarded a recommendation to adopt the attached ordinance to reinstate the old map, which we had used successfully for the past 26 years, and so staff is requesting the council adopt the attached ordinance, and I will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a conformity item. Vice Mayor Hanson?
I have no, I'm the speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and make a motion to approve the item.
Okay. Conformity. No further comments. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, abstain. That matter passes eight to nothing. Okay, let us move now to, sorry, the next file item. Looking for my... File item 19. Who's presenting on 19? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Lynn Bashaw. I am the Assistant City Auditor. The City Auditor's Office conducts its work in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards and provides independent, objective, and accurate information about city operations. The recommendation before you is that you pass a motion approving the City Auditor's preliminary assessment of the city's on-street parking meters. We are presenting this preliminary assessment to provide counsel with a timely response regarding allegations of erroneous parking citations. Our overall conclusion in this preliminary report is that based on our analysis of the available data, there did not appear to be widespread...
Excuse, excuse me one second, Ms. Bashaw. Good evening, sir. If you don't mind, we're, we're in the middle of the public process. Thank you so much, sir. Go ahead. Please continue.
Our overall conclusion in this preliminary report is that based on our analysis of the available data, there did not appear to be widespread or systemic issues related to the ParkMobile app or the parking meters. There are always opportunities for improvement, and this report, while preliminary, reflects some areas where we feel improvements could be made. During this review, we worked closely with the Parking Division. They are in agreement with the report's findings, and they have already started addressing them. In order to leverage the knowledge we have gained during this preliminary assessment and the good working relationship we have developed with the city's Parking Division through this exercise, we have added an audit of the city's on-street parking to the City Auditor's FY 1819 annual audit plan, and we expect to initiate this audit immediately following the preliminary report. This will provide us an opportunity to further research some of the areas identified in the preliminary report and to formalize our audit recommendations. This slide provides some context and background information. This figure shows the number of meter citations per month, along with some significant parking-related events that occurred during the same timeframe. Based on the data in the city's parking citation system, just over 230,000 on-street parking citations for expired meters were issued between calendar years 2015 and 2017. Some significant parking-related events that occurred during this same time period include: the ParkMobile app was being phased in, vehicle detection sensors were installed on some of the meters, meter hours were extended in some parts of downtown and midtown, and the Golden One Center opened. All of these changes were expected to impact on-street parking operations in some way. While the previous figure showed the number of citations issued, this figure shows the number of citations contested. You'll notice increased activity during early 2017 and again in October 2017. When we obtained the citation data, not all contested citations had been processed yet. Many of the citations for September, November, and December 2017 were still pending review by a hearing officer, which is why they reflect a very low level of activity. The Sacramento Business Journal and the Sacramento Bee reported the increase in the number of contested citations that were issued in early 2017, and suggested that this was caused by an ongoing issue with the ParkMobile app's connectivity. Councilmember Hanson requested that the Auditor's Office independently evaluate the cause of an increase in citation... of an increase in citation dismissals, to verify that motorists were not being issued citations in error, and to identify opportunities for improvement. In order to investigate the causes of the increase in contested citations, we separated out those citations that were dismissed from those that were upheld. This figure shows the number of dismissed citations compared to the number of upheld citations over the last three calendar years. Between calendar years 2015 and mid-2016, more citations were upheld than were dismissed. However, starting in August 2016, the Parking Division began dismissing more citations than they were upholding. As the figure illustrates, the overall rise in contested citations in early 2017 appears to be from citations that were dismissed, not citations that were upheld. So the question is, why are citations being dismissed? Finding one is that multiple factors impacted the number of dismissed citations over the last three years. This figure shows some of the most common reasons for citation dismissal, based on the manual notes entered by hearing officers when adjudicating a contested citation. While this data contained gaps and inconsistencies, which we will discuss later, it was the best information available. And we believe this data still provides us with some valuable information on what was happening and why citations were being dismissed. During early 2015, pay and display was one of the most prevalent reasons for dismissal. However, in late 2016, sensor error became the most dominant reason for dismissal. This pattern coincides with the installation of vehicle detection sensors that occurred in mid to late 2016. Based on communications with the meter vendor, it appears that the Parking Division was aware of the sensor errors and worked with the vendor to identify particular meters that were prematurely resetting in order to troubleshoot and fix those sensors. In regards to the October 2017 increase in dismissed citations, the Parking Division discovered that a T-Mobile wireless outage had caused some ParkMobile payments to not reach the parking meters, and the indicator lights on the meter for those payments did not turn green. At that time, enforcement officers were reliant on the indicator light to tell them if a meter had been paid, and some citations were issued in error as a result. When the Parking Division became aware of this issue, they attempted to identify the erroneous citations, and proactively contested and dismissed the citations on behalf of the customers. This is why we see a spike in the number of dismissed citations in October of 2017. To provide some background information on how a mobile payment works, this figure shows the mobile payment information flow. When a payment is made from a mobile phone, the signal travels from ParkMobile to the credit card exchange for approval, then to the IPS meter software through a wireless carrier, either Verizon or T-Mobile, and finally to the parking meter, where the indicator light on the meter should then turn green. An error in any part of this process could cause a payment made from a mobile phone to not reach the parking meter. To provide some context on how often a communication error actually happens, we estimate that only 0.44% of ParkMobile transactions involved a dismissed citation due to a communication issue where the signal did not reach the meter. Based on our analysis, this did not appear to be a widespread or systemic issue. Finding two is related to the citation system's data quality. We believe that the citation system's data quality could be improved to better identify trends and perform analysis. When adjudicating citations, hearing officers have the option of coding dismissed citations as summary dismissal or as a warning. Unfortunately, these codes do not tell us why citations were dismissed. Likewise, the upheld citations could be coded as meter cite, which also does not provide a lot of detail on why citations were upheld. As mentioned previously, hearing officers do have a manual notes field available to them that allows them to enter notes into the system. And this field does provide some insight when looking at individual citations. However, it's difficult to aggregate this information, because hearing officers may not enter the same exact notes for the same dismissal reasons, or they may not enter notes at all. We believe this area could be improved, and we will be addressing this further in the audit of on-street parking. Finding three is that further investigation is needed to evaluate the cause and effect of broken meter calls to the 311 call center. We obtained call center data related to the city's Parking Division and charted the call center data for broken meter calls by month. We noted what appeared to be a seasonal trend, with more broken meters reported during winter months. We also charted the number of non-sunlight hours in Sacramento, and found these two data sets were highly correlated. While it's too early to establish causation, this could potentially mean that the batteries are not maintaining a sufficient solar charge during winter months. We will also explore this issue further in the audit of on-street parking. To summarize, based on our independent analysis of the available data, there did not appear to be a widespread or systemic issue related to the parking meters. However, there's always room for improvement. We have communicated our preliminary results to the Parking Division, and they are already working towards addressing the areas identified. These audits helped to demonstrate the city's commitment to continuous improvement. We look forward to working with the Parking Division during the audit of the city's on-street parking, where we will continue to research the preliminary issues identified in this report, and will return with formal recommendations. The Office of the City Auditor would like to thank the Parking Division for their time and cooperation during the audit process, and I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the Public Works Director, Hector Barone, to provide a response to our review.
Now, can we ask you a couple of questions first?
Oh, sure.
Is that okay? Shy now, we've got a couple of members up. I just want to ask some number of questions. To really understand, the report's very good and detailed in terms of the reasons for the errors and some of the trends, but I want to understand sort of the big picture. So you say that on average, we issue about 6,400 citations a month over the period. Is that correct?
That sounds right, yeah.
And so I look at March of 2017 as one month where sensor error was the greatest cause of the error, and the number of errors look like, the number of dismissed citations, excuse me, is about 650.
About 10%.
That's about 10%. So can you talk to us, put that number in perspective, for example, compared to other cities that have had these technologies for longer than we have? It seems high to me, but-
It's 10% of the citations that were contested were dismissed. So the numbers kind of get smaller and smaller. We talk about the number of transactions, and then there's the number of citations, and there's the number of the contested citations, and then you get down to the number of contested citations that were dismissed.
Well, no, you said 6,400 citations.
Mm-hmm.
And in this one month, 650 were dismissed.
Right.
So that was, that means maybe more than 650 appealed.
Mm-hmm.
But it's still on a base of 6,400 a month. So that's 10% ultimately that were overturned.
Correct. Yes, we did not perform benchmarking in this preliminary analysis. We only looked at our data within Sacramento, but we certainly could pull in additional data when we do the next step, when we do the full audit, to see what other cities, what they're doing, and what their numbers are like.
I mean, I don't know if this is fair, not, but I just want, I want to understand, we'll hear from the director too, to just help us put into context, but, you know, technology can be tricky.
Mm-hmm.
And if you went to your ATM, and once out of every 10 times you withdrew $40, and it indicated that you withdrew $60, you'd be concerned about that, right? If that happened 10% of the time.
Right, and these-
And this is costing people money and time to be able to have to go, and, Kades, is 10% reasonable, unreasonable, standard with other cities, or not?
Definitely the height of what we've experienced over the last three years. It's not generally 10%.
I understand. I do understand that. It was one month.
Mm-hmm. But we could certainly do benchmarking, if that's something that you're interested in, when we do our full audit, to see what other cities are doing, and what their ratios are like.
Okay. Well, let's hear from the director, because I'd like to hear his opinion on that. You want to take, we've got, let's hear from the director, and go from there.
So, good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the City Council. Hector Barone, Director of Public Works. I first wanted to thank the City Auditor's Office, Jorge Ortega, our City Auditor, and Lynn Bashaw, our Assistant City Auditor, for their independent and professional audit. The department concurs with the findings, and in summary, we do see opportunities for improvement in our work. I'm pleased that the audit found that there were no widespread or systemic issues, nor did our employees intentionally issue erroneous citations. The audit was important in maintaining and restoring the public's confidence in our work. You know, parking modernization program uses technology and innovation to better serve our community. For the last two to three years, our Parking Division, led by our Parking Manager, Matt Ironman, deployed 4,500 smart meters for on-street parking, and various off-street solutions such as SAC Park, the website that allows you to reserve your parking space in advance. Implementation of this technology has helped ensure parking supply for our residents, our businesses, workers, and for Golden One Center events. It has also helped facilitate development within our downtown. And I've got to tell you that I'm really proud of our Parking Services Division employees. They're leaders in their field, and recognized state and nationwide for their work. In 2016, they were named the Parking Program of the Year by the California Public Parking Association. And Matt Ironman will tell you, he regularly gets phone calls from other cities throughout the country, wanting to learn more about what we're doing here in Sacramento. Being a leader in innovation and technology does come with a learning curve, as the audit noted. We acknowledge that we need to continue to evolve and make improvements, and we're eager to work with the City Auditor in the upcoming audit. At this time, I wanted to thank our Parking Services employees for all their work, and also want to thank them for their professionalism throughout the audit. I want to ask Matt Ironman, our Parking Manager, to come forward and briefly highlight some of the technologies we expect to deploy in the next few months, that I feel that will improve our operations. And then, Mayor, hopefully we can also have an answer to your question that you had.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the City Council. Matt Ironman, Parking Services Manager. The Parking Division wishes to thank the City Auditor's Office for its thorough and respectful review of the allegations brought forward in 2017. I also want to thank the 130 Parking Services employees who work hard every day to maintain and improve the parking system. As we continue to modernize a parking system that is over 74 years old, we will continue to innovate and customize technology that works best for our visitors, residents, and residents of Sacramento. Our goal is to offer patrons various payment options to increase compliance. While the improvements we've made have been well-received, the infusion of technology in any application comes with the potential for some errors to occur. We appreciate that the City Auditor's Office recognizes that with over 5 million parking meter transactions a year, it's not surprising that some errors may occur. The opportunity to have an independent, third-party review of our operation not only benefits those who question the reliability of our technology, but these positive findings also help build customer confidence in the parking system, and allows us to continuously improve our service. As the audit findings pointed out, the Parking Service Division responded to issues as they became aware of them, and there is no evidence that the Division intentionally issued erroneous citations. Nevertheless, we can improve. We will continue to modernize our parking operations and work with the City Auditors to implement future recommendations. In the next 12 months, the Division will be implementing the following technologies to improve customer service and increase efficiencies. We're going to implement real-time handheld ticket riders to check for payments and permit status, process residential parking permits online, instant citation upload, allowing drivers to immediately view, pay, or appeal their citation, real-time activity metrics to collect and analyze data. In closing, I would like to thank the City Auditor's Office for working on the preliminary assessment of the city's on-street parking meters, the Parking Services Division staff for their level of professionalism during the audit process, and finally, to the City Council for their support of this audit, which provides transparency of our system. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We have, how many?
I have two speakers on this item.
Two speakers, and I'll turn it over to the council members, yes.
Thank you. The first is Mac Elworthy, then Isaac Gonzalez.
Dale, this is, we don't want to see technology and shots. We want to know is it making money? We want to know what's the profit split, the private parking lines, what's the split with the city? That's public information, because that same thing is property tax. Now, we want to see the tickets that go to court. We want to see what's the split with the court and tickets. Also, we want to see what's the parking meters making. We didn't want to see numbers, people. We don't want to see charts and technology. That's not paying our bills. Charts and technology is not paying bills. You need to see numbers there now. Because this has been a big thing, and when I gather, you lose the money. Plus, the state got their hand in the ticket, too. So tell the people the truth here. Come with the numbers of dollars, not with the technology and the charts. We need the real physical dollar. That's what the general public needs now. Because this has gone far enough and long enough for you to have figured out how to show the people whether it's a profit or loss. Come and sit. There are other people on this panel should be able to say the same thing, but I see some of them never say a word when they talk about money. Never say a word. Why? Because they can't count? Or the cat got the tongue? Which one is? You know, let's tell the truth here. You know, let's be transparent with the public of what you are doing here, because this is simple racketeering, because I know somebody got a ticket here, and that ticket was dismissed, and we find out a lot of how that ticket was dismissed, or how these cars are registered in the city. So be aware of what you're doing.
And our next speaker is Isaac Gonzalez.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. I appreciate you allowing me to speak, even though it was a little late in getting to the meeting tonight.
Okay, welcome.
In many ways, I feel like patient zero, because I received some parking tickets myself in September and October that were dismissed by the city. I love the ParkMobile app, and as a matter of fact, I'll show you that I used it this very evening, parking in front of the City Council. So I'm not afraid of this program, even though I did receive some erroneous tickets in the past. I really appreciate using it, use it all the time. And I appreciate the amount of attention that these erroneous tickets brought to the program, because I think it's a great program. It entices people to stay in our city core a lot longer, it entices people to use businesses a lot longer, and when it works properly, it's a great program. It's very easy to use, and I no longer keep quarters in my cars, no longer fear about running back to get to the meter. I will just say that, from an outward-facing perspective, when there are hiccups in the system, let's just be mindful that people might be really frustrated, right? A lot of our community members, no one likes to get a parking ticket, especially if they feel they paid their fair fee to park their car. So just remember that when we're outward-facing and engaging with the public, if they have received a ticket that they believe is erroneous, that we can do a lot better in customer service and relations. I'm not a person who believes that there was anything nefarious taking place with what happened. It's just the system. And as we heard earlier, there's millions of transactions with that system. So of course, there's going to be some room for error. But I'm glad that we've taken such serious steps to address it. I look forward to seeing what's next in the full report from the auditor, and I read the report, and it's very illuminating to the system, and thank you so much for looking at this very important issue.
Thank you, Isaac.
I have no more speakers.
Okay, let's hear from the members. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank our auditor staff and the parking staff for the great job here. I know that this was stressful, because in the midst of learning about these problems, there was a lot of frustration from the public, as Mr. Gonzalez noted. But I think, as was also noted by Hector, Matt, and the auditor staff, this was a healthy process. I think that helped us identify some things that we could improve, but also gave us some questions we'd never thought to ask before, and I think that's part of why it was very I think, just for a little bit of focus here, we have asked for a lot of change in the rollout of these technologies, and it's not unusual to have hiccups. I think the thing that, as we go into the next audit and into the lessons learned, clearly there was no mal-intention. The city wasn't ticketing, as many people said, to fund the arena. It was just, we had technology that wasn't working the way it was supposed to. So whether it was the sensors, ParkMobile, or particular handheld devices that are used to check it, I think that one of the key takeaways I got from some of the briefings was our vendor contracts. And I know that our city staff has borne the brunt of some of these questions, but I also believe the vendors have failed to fulfill some of the obligations that they have, and the mayor hit it on the head. These systems should work, and they should work consistently. And when they don't work, the responsibility should be on the vendor, and I think that there should be significant deterrence for them to not perform, whether financial penalties or other things, because guess what? The amount of staff time and energy to chase these broken sensors, or to figure out what's going on with T-Mobile, or Verizon, or whatever it is with ParkMobile, those things are real cost to us, a reputational cost, goodwill with the public. a real cost to us, a reputational cost, goodwill with the public, but also money. And so I think that's one of the key things I want to take away from this, is how to ensure that we have appropriate penalties in place for the vendors, that they perform all the time, and then when they don't perform, they react quickly to help fix that. On this, another point, too, just data access. At first, our parking staff weren't given access to the data that we were requesting, and the vendors were very stubborn about that thing. It would take weeks. They didn't really want to show us their books for our own ticket citations. And I think, once the auditor's office got involved, it must be your charm. But they reacted much more quickly. And I think that's a sign that those parts of our contracts, too, need to ensure that we always have adequate access, so that whether it's the data sets or the ability to analyze them, that we can process that and have that analytical capability without having to rely on them to tell us what the data is and says. The last thing, I think we continue to have some challenges with sensors. I know that, Matt, you've been tremendous in trying to help businesses like Mulvaney's, which was talked about in the Sacramento Bee, where they've had problems with sensors. And I just appreciate, you know, this is an orchestra that we're trying to run, on-street parking, off-street parking. We have the new parking-protected bike lanes that have gone in, and there's constant change. And so the ability to always fine-tune, the work will probably never be done, especially as we have also implemented, and Isaac didn't mention this, but I think it's also great, the plus zones, so you can stay longer and not get a ticket. That helps make us more visitor-friendly, more employee-friendly, and sends the right message. But those are my thoughts. I appreciate that this was a hard, but probably necessary conversation. I think it's left us all better. So, thank you. Thank you all, and I'll move the item.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Geta.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and second the item here. I also wanted to thank our auditor's office for good work on this, and very good work on this, and also identifying some interesting correlations about, you know, how our system may be malfunctioning when it's a solar-based system and it's, you know, we're having higher tickets in the wintertime. Interestingly enough, it's also for encouraging people to come down to shop and be here during the holiday season, that could be a challenge as well. I do want to thank our parking staff and our public work staff. You guys have been doing a lot of good work, and particularly managing the issue of parking. I know in our own neighborhoods, we have challenges, whether you're in Elmhurst with, you know, UC Davis employee parking in the neighborhood, and then residents not having a place to park, or managing just, you know, our limited curb space. I did like to hear, I did like the response on the real-time verification to make sure that we're responding to those issues. I think like Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, you know, those are, it can be frustrating at times, and I had the conversation with Mr. Mulvaney, you know, about this issue, and, you know, people come down for either work or experience, or to get their business done, because this is the municipal center, and it can be frustrating when you come out and you get a ticket. Just after we had our briefing with the auditor's office, I got a, I wanted to identify a meter that had some issues, because I used the Park Mobile app myself, and then, next thing you know, it wasn't registering. So if you could take a look at meter 16957, that would be helpful. And I took a photo of it, just in case, a screenshot, and also, just, you know, but to the point, I think, I want to make sure that we're doing what we can to make, things will happen, right? It shows that it doesn't happen often, but we want to make sure that that experience is not one that has a negative ripple effect of coming down. Councilmember Hanson represents the downtown area, so he hears it, because he represents the downtown area. But many of us represent the suburbs who come downtown and get those tickets. And so we hear it because of that area. So we want to make sure that at least we catch the issues and problems quick and early to address those, because for some folks, a ticket is a lot. So with that, all to say, great work. I think we're fine-tuning it. I think this clears up a lot of misconceptions about where we were on ticketing, but I know that there's still a kink, so if we can just focus on the key thing of customer service, and that's what I heard over and over again, you know, things are going to happen, but can you make at least the customer service experience part successful? So with that, Mr. Mayor, glad to second.
Thank you so much. It's been seconded. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gera, that's called rolling up your shirt sleeves and getting in the district. 16957, I'll keep my eyes open for it. So I just, I don't want to repeat what my other colleagues have said, but I would like to extend a thank you to Mr. Ironman and his staff, because they've been enormously helpful in solving a lot of parking problems for businesses and for individuals. You know, we did have a problem, and I'm rather pleased with the city for jumping on an audit very quickly. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for calling for that audit in a very appropriate way, so that we can be transparent, so people can understand the problem and understand where we're going. I'd like to address what Mr. Gonzalez said. The Park Mobile app is a tremendous tool, when it works well, and it mostly works well. It's very important that when we do have glitches, that people who get erroneous tickets are treated well at revenue, that they don't go and, you know, have to wait in line for a very long time and be treated, that they be treated with respect and, you know, clarity when they try to fix these tickets. And I think we've made improvements in that as well. When I was running for council, I'd often have to come to meetings here at City Hall, and I got several tickets, because there wasn't a Park Mobile app and there wasn't a plus zone. Had there been, I would have saved myself 500 bucks. So I think we're moving in the right direction. It is a great tool, and I think our staff has done a great job. It's a great audit, Lynn, and I think that we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to add my thanks to Matt and his crew, and actually, to City Manager Howard Chan. There's just nothing more frustrating to a person in Sacramento, either A, trying to run a business, or be visiting here, than getting a ticket they think they didn't deserve. And it's just not the reputation we want. Agreed, Councilmember Hanson bears the brunt of it in his district, but it's all of our responsibility to help him and to stand up for the businesses in our city, so this is a moment where we do that. I appreciate, Matt, your willingness to accept the fact that it might not be a perfect system, right? We can't stand in defense of every single thing. There are, we can always do better, and I think this is one of those areas, and I appreciate that you have that attitude. For Midtown and Downtown, this can be really challenging. So thank you for bringing, you know, your team to a place where they feel like they can come to you when there's an issue, and being creative and unique in your solutions, even sometimes block by block. So, and Howard, thank you for providing him and his department the support to do that. I think it's been very helpful to several of us who have been called upon for solutions that were difficult for us to find.
Thank you. A couple concluding comments. I want to thank you as well. This is maybe one of the toughest jobs in the city, because it does really strike at the heart of the consumer experience, if you will, when they're out for a good time or running errand or whatever, and they get a ticket that maybe they did not deserve. And I know you're working very hard with a new technology to make it as good as possible, and the numbers appear to be now going in the right direction, and so thank you. But I do want to, I think, speak to two things, so that we're not too, we don't pat ourselves, we're not, you know, that we're aware that we have work that remains to be done. Number one, I do like the auditor's suggestion of benchmarking here, because I still don't understand myself how our performance compares to other cities. And of course, we want to measure these trends going forward. And the second thing, and this is what Vice Mayor Hanson said, which really resonates with me, and I said it in a different way, but I don't think I was thinking about it quite the way you said it, which is that you take all the flak, but we're paying a lot of money to a vendor to get the technology right. And I was whispering to the city manager here, and he told me, you know, when the contracts are up for renewal, that we need to take a real look at the penalty provision, if you will, of the contracts, to make sure that the responsibility is placed with the right entity here. Because, I'm sorry, I go back to my ATM example. I have not had, in all my years using an ATM, maybe once, but never had the transaction come out differently than what I deposited or withdrew. And so if it's 5%, if it's 3%, if it's 10%, those are still people really being affected in very negative ways. I mean, it, because then if you're going to contest it, that's time out of your, out of your day to do that. And so the onus needs to be somewhere, and it should be on those who tell us that they've, that they're presenting this technology. We are far enough along in 2018 where there shouldn't be this level of errors, I don't think. And that's just from a layperson's perspective here. I know it's complicated and it's new. But I want to make sure that if we're paying a lot of money, that they're responsible for getting this right, and then are responsible when a city resident or somebody coming from out of town has a bad experience and has to go through the hassle of contesting a citation. Because, you know, there's going to be a few mistakes, but hundreds of people, that's, it's got to get better. And it's not you. You're getting better. You're good. You already were good, but we got to hold your partner's feet to the fire here as well, please. Okay? What is there, a motion and a second on receiving this audit? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. That's accepted. Thank you. We have one more item this evening, and that is file item 20. Who's presenting?
Yes, Mr. Devlin. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Joseph Devlin with your Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement. Last year, after the passage of Proposition 64, Governor Brown and the California State Legislature passed Senate Bill 94, a bipartisan legislation allowing for state licensing of temporary cannabis events, as long as they admit the following criteria. One, they only occurred on county fairgrounds. Two, they are restricted to persons 21 years and older. Three, they are not visible from any public place or non-age-restricted area. Four, the sale and consumption of alcohol and tobacco are prohibited. They also require local authorization. As you know, California has a long tradition of independently operated temporary cannabis events, but until recently, they were largely unauthorized, unlicensed, and did not mandate local revenue or community benefit. Now, with a defined and legal pathway to state authorization, several prospective event organizers this year have pursued temporary event applications at the CalExpo fairgrounds. CalExpo management reviewed the candidates and chose one as a one-time pilot program event. Their selection was based on the strength of application, existing reputation of the event operator, and the potential revenue benefit to CalExpo as well as the city of Sacramento. High Times, historically known as a publishing company, has evolved over the last decade into one of the most successful event operators in the country. They've compiled a distinguished track record of hosting safe, successful, and compliant cannabis events around the world, including 20 in different cities throughout California. Its Cannabis Cup events are the gold standard in the industry and are known for their commitment to public safety and overall consumer and community experience. Their events include a law enforcement-approved traffic plan, a comprehensive security plan approved by the CHP, a mandatory recycling program, a community benefit program, and insurance for every vendor. Over the past few weeks, the city has worked with CalExpo and the event operator to develop a proposal and model framework for a one-time pilot event, which will inform rulemaking for future, for potential future temporary events of this nature. As of now, the Cannabis Cup event featuring several nationally-known recording artists will be held this weekend at CalExpo. It is anticipated to draw 15,000 event visitors and feature more than 280 commercial exhibits, both cannabis and non-cannabis. The food vendors will all be Sacramento-based. The state of California is prepared to review and potentially issue a temporary license for onsite cannabis sales and consumption, limited to a specific location within those premises. Additionally, the state has confirmed that, if permitted, they will be sending enforcement officers. We anticipate a local tax revenue generation in excess of $200,000 from this two-day event. The organizers have committed to a robust ride-sharing program, coordination with state law enforcement, free booth space for equity operators, and additional noise restrictions. To address certain concerns previously raised, they are implementing an enhanced security program with additional onsite security personnel, monitored limits for per-person cumulative retail sales, and entrance and exit inspections. It's important to note that all participating cannabis vendors must be dual-licensed, both by the state of California and their local jurisdictions. In addition, this event operator has a long history of partnering with local nonprofits to advance the cause of social justice and economic opportunities within our community, within communities disproportionately impacted by past policies of cannabis-related criminalization. Here in Sacramento, High Times is working in close coordination with Build Black Coalition and other community organizations focused on expanding economic development and career pathways. They have committed a combined $140,000 to support this cause. The recommendation in your supplemental material is to pass a resolution authorizing the city manager, or city manager designated to issue approvals and impose conditions for the High Times' request to hold a one-time cannabis event at CalExpo. If approved, city officials will use this opportunity to observe the event and report back for the purposes of future policy development. One note that I would like to read into the record is a correction of the CalExpo address, which is 1600 CalExpo Exposition Boulevard, not 16,000 Exposition Boulevard. Here with me to answer any questions are Rick Pickering and Tom Martinez from CalExpo, and Adam Levine, the CEO and chairman of the High Times organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devlin. Why don't we take the public testimony first, then we'll have a discussion among council members.
Thank you. And as Mr. Devlin said on the resolution, the correction is 1600, not 16,000 Exposition Boulevard. So the resolution will be amended to say that. I have six speakers tonight. The first is Michael Voy, Mac Elworthy, then Malachi Amen. Mr. Voy.
Don't really know how to come down on this, because there's some food, there'll be some food vendors there, and there'll be some tax money collected from that source, which is beneficial. But I just want you to think about one thing. I don't, and every once in a while, I quit reading SNNR, but every once in a while, I used to see ads in there, $35 or $40 seemed to be the standard going price for some promotion. Out of that, so if a low and moderate-income family spends $35 to $45, and they have children, there's damage to that family, and there's damage to that youngster. You were talking about mitigation when you were way back in formulating all these policies, that if you could figure out what the mitigation was, you'd know what the fees should be. Let's say $35 or $45 comes out of a family's income. That's money that could be available for tutoring, for shoes, for a lot of, a lot of things, supplementing requirements where you have to pay at a school or something like that. Now, out of that $35, the city's going to get, what, three? Three and a half? So what kind of benefit ratio is that to somebody that's lost $35? You'd have to have 10 families that don't have any kids, just to break even, and that's just, then that assumes that a youngster that's been damaged would get the benefit. Is the youngster that's damaged, is that one that's going to be one of the thousand interns that you're funding? The $1,000 a year to go to summer camp somewhere? I don't know. Think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Voy.
Our next speaker is Mac Elworthy, Malachi Amen, and then Our next speaker is Mac Elworthy, Malachi Amen, and then Lorraine Brown.
What is a cannabis event? Can anybody answer that? Are they going to give each person three joints of peace and see who gets high first? Bring me cabocia, because I don't play those games. But Adele, this is your problem. You could have solved this thing, because you know when it went on the ballot, you had plenty of time to sit down and solve this. Now, who going to pay to have this at CalExpo? Is the city going to pay to have this out there? You can't have none out there free. Somebody got to pay. But we still see it. Is it the $30,000 up front and you can't get back, get it back for an application? There's no other business in America that we ever heard this. See, we didn't have the right black folks at the table, new business, to tell you, hell no. We're not going to accept that. Now, the black people didn't vote it in. They voted with the white folks in the State of California voted in, because the black people don't have enough votes to vote in. I voted out. So who got the intent to make money off this? White folks. And you're saying, well, to go in the neighborhood. Now, we had something here supposed to went on about the special property in Sacramento. That was about marijuana. Now, how could you let table that where, wait, warrant? See, that's what I'm saying, people, you, you do things just the old simple way as the old folks ask backers. That's the way you do things here. You got to do them business, people. If it ain't no money in it, why play with it? And you know it's going to be money in it. You ain't got people that know what is testing? And who going to do the lab work? The same thing, come out here about the white boys, change the stuff on DNA. Who can say, you ain't going to put something on that act, on that stuff to make a hook? Phil Amos never went, paid out money because somebody died. They paid out money because the stuff they put on the cigarette to hook you. So what you going to put on this marijuana for the people to say it's better? I don't know, you know, because I don't smoke it. Tell them something, Dale.
Our next speaker is Malachi Amen, then Lorraine Brown, then Dave Genesey.
And Janay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Malachi Amen, president of the California Urban Partnership, also a representative of the Build Black Coalition. And I'm happy to, and honored to have here with me today Kai Ying-Hang, who is Vice President of Sierra Health Foundation and the center at the foundation. And just wanted to come in and weigh in to say that, you know, as all of you know, we have a very long way to go in the rollout of the city's equity program. But we're very happy about the way that this particular event is being rolled out. We're happy to work with the event organizers. It's a small but very important step towards equity and criminalization and economic development opportunities. And we think that this is an item on your agenda that's worthy of your vote.
Did you want to say something, Kai?
Only just to say, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, we are thrilled by this opportunity. As you know, Build Black, the coalition, has a charge in terms of proactively investing in the African-American community, and we feel that this is an opportunity that's very much in alignment with our goals. So we, we, we look forward to this potential to partner with you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lorraine Brown, then Dave Genesey, and then Sheila Dedenbach.
Well, it seems like people that are opposed, as myself, think this is quite hypocritical because it's promoting cannabis as a holistic health program. And I was wondering who the organizers are, and I didn't catch it, social justice nonprofits. We are promoting, the stats show that for the youth, cannabis in pot is a gateway to a life of addiction. And so we're promoting addiction and telling them it's healthy for you. At the same time, we're advertising, come to the nonprofits and get drug rehab. So who's benefiting from this? It seems like our little partners and our business people that I identify as violent drug dealers. You know that, right? The pharmaceutical companies and the pot people, to me, they're pretty violent. And the, and the results are violent. And I want to commend Vice Mayor Stephen Hanson, what you were saying about T-Mobile. It's from Texas, what do you expect? They like to sabotage, but anyway, or they don't believe in our laws, you know, they're anti-federalist. So any way that they can jam it up, they're happy. And I don't know how these contracts come about. Why are we doing post-ad hoc, am I, wait, post, I don't know, I'm getting confused. But anyway, why are we doing it after the fact and not before? Who's making these agreements? So my concern is, this is similar to the dichotomy of closing businesses that have been here for 30 years, 10 years ago, because they weren't meeting ADA requirements. And now, new buildings don't even have ADA. This building doesn't have ADA requirements as a government building. So it seems things are upside down, and we need to put them back in order.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Your time has expired.
They're asking everyone to be prudent.
Next speaker is Dave Genesey, and then Sheila Dedenbach.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor. I come here on behalf of tenants in my building for the last 25 years. The other medical marijuana patients. A year ago, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to repeat what you said, but guess what? I've been in the hospice, I've outled the wall. I'm here for our police officers. I'm here to beg you to talk and be engaged with Angelique Caspi and the experience of Colorado and Washington State. Slippery slope. I'm here to support our police officers, as you well know. I would have liked to have had Heather here today, but it took me five hours to get here. You know what the topic is? Right there. Our police officers are put in a box here. We don't want to deprive people of their reasonable use of medical marijuana. But look at these states that have had it. Listen to what Angelique had to say last year while I was sitting in the audience listening. And you remember your very private message to me, Mr. Mayor? I'm still here, and I'm fighting for every minute, every hour. I'd like to see after council. I have a 10 o'clock curfew. I'm in hospice care. And like I said, I'm here for our police officers because they know what a slippery slope this is. But by the same token, I love my tenants, many of whom have been with me for 25 years before I had to retire. And I speak for them as well, that they need medical marijuana. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ashby, God bless you for bringing this up last year. We need to look at it again, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Genesey. God bless you.
And our last speaker tonight is Sheila Dedenbach.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking the time to look at this particular issue. My name's Sheila Dedenbach. I am the owner of Heavenly Sweet, a City of Sacramento and State of California permitted and fully compliant manufacturer and distributor. I thank you for taking the time to consider Mr. Devlin's proposal. We've come a long way in the cannabis industry. I've been doing this for 10 years, and we have come a very long way. It's been a difficult road getting permitted. It is a daunting task, to say the least, but we're happy to be here and we're happy to come into compliance. One of the main components of the cannabis industry, as we try to meld compliance with the way the industry had operated, is industry conventions, and that's what High Times Cannabis Cup is, among others. I ask, though, that, that you definitely take, make a yes vote on this, because a yes vote means no to black market events. And they happen all the time, black market events, and I know that your compliance officers occasionally catch one. They're pretty, pretty sneaky, though. So we, we're just looking forward to being able to have the event and be in compliance. High Times is a very reputable affiliation, and I thank you for voting yes on this.
I have no more speakers on this item.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's turn it over to the city council for questions and discussion and potential action here. I'll begin with Councilmember Harris, District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. As some of you may know, CalExpo is in District 3. It's kind of an unusual situation and property because it's actually state property and governed by state law, and generally is not subject to our local ordinance. We create a lot of agreements with CalExpo when we have interplay about events like noise ordinance and so forth. And our relationship with CalExpo is a very important one, I think, to the city and certainly to me as councilmember in District 3. I'd like to thank Rick Pickering and Tom Martinez for coming today, and Jason Kinney and Adam Levin representing High Times, because they, they came to my office and we talked out this event and what it might mean, how it would be run, and it was an interesting conversation, to be sure. I would like to point out that this event was only brought to my attention about 12 days ago, and that's a bit problematic for me. The state law requires, as Joe mentioned, that the state can issue a permit for an adult-use cannabis event, but it's predicated upon permission from the local jurisdiction. So in that case, it is true that the local jurisdiction is the City of Sacramento, and yet we were only entreated in this regard for permission, pretty late in the game. So we're kind of in a squeeze play here. We do not currently have an ordinance to allow adult use in the City of Sacramento. Currently, it is not lawful to use cannabis products in public. You can't walk down the street and smoke a joint. You can't do that in a park. You can do it in the privacy of your own home, and I believe also in our medical or our dispensaries, which now allow adult use also. So as we dove a little deeper into the conversation, I found a couple of issues that were, I think, problematic. One is that our local dispensaries currently are the only place you can lawfully buy adult-use products. And per our city ordinance, they cannot lawfully go to CalExpo, to this event, and sell their products. I'm not sure if you knew that, but that is in fact the case. I can bring the city attorney up to corroborate that, but that's really a problem. Here we are thinking about having an adult-use event in Sacramento, and yet our own local businesses cannot lawfully vend there. And yet they intend to, so we have a very contradictory situation. Also, in the course of our conversation, it came out, as you may know, a person can carry up to an ounce of cannabis product on their, on their person. And they were going to do a bag check on the way in and put people through a magnetometer. But I said, okay, if you go into this event and you purchase product from several vendors, you could have more than an ounce on the way out. Well, that creates an unlawful situation, and that's not a good thing. So to their credit, the event organizers said, you know what? We can, we can work with that. We can do a wristband punch so that when somebody reaches an ounce of, of purchase, they can't buy anymore at the event, and we can do an exit check as well and make sure that people are in a lawful condition going out. So I really appreciate their flexibility to look at that particular situation, and they also agreed to do a point-of-sale tax transaction on, on every sale, and that meant a bit more revenue for the city. So clearly, they were willing to bend to make this thing work. Now, you know what? Having been a small businessman, it is not something that I would relish to do, to cause somebody to lose income if they run a business responsibly. And that applies to High Times and CalExpo. But the fact remains that when Prop 64 passed, we embarked on a path of working our, our laws here in Sacramento to regulate the cannabis industry, to do it slowly and methodically, and to do it transparently, so that we could bring this black market out into the light. And over the last two years, I think we've done a good job, and it hasn't been without hiccups. It's been a rather arduous path overall, and it's taken a tremendous amount of time. And I thank Jay Sheneer because he's kind of guided this process as the lead at lawn ledge, and I think we've made tremendous gains. But nonetheless, we've never had a conversation about adult use in public places. This is a big conversation to have. It can fundamentally change the way the, the city works. And I think tantamount to having that conversation is having some kind of way to ensure that the police and CHP have a tool at their disposal to find out if somebody is under the influence of cannabis, you know, a breathalyzer test or some other test, so that our law enforcement can understand when somebody is driving under the influence or, you know, under the influence generally. And we don't have that. And I think that we can't have a truly informed decision and discussion about adult use in public places until we have a tool like that. That's my own personal opinion, and I know that when, when we enter into the conversation about what we will allow in the City of Sacramento, that will be a very important piece to me. So, you know, all this being said, we've got, we've got an issue here. We've got a responsible business that can probably produce a well-run event. We have a number of consumers who would love to have that event, but we also have a lot of constituents who don't want it to happen, and I certainly hear from them as well. The problem here really is that our, our ordinance is not really mature in this regard, and this event sort of puts us in a squeeze play. When it was first, well, the staff report that you first saw, that came out two weeks ago, talked about empowering the city manager to approve events like this, not only this one, but in the future. I raised an objection to that, and I said, you know, if this was to go forward, I could only see it as a one-time, because the sequence of events is that, quite frankly, the promoter did not come to the city early enough for us to have this conversation in our normal way, to bring it to lawn ledge, bring it up to council, and again, be slow, deliberate, and transparent about whether we wanted to allow an event like this. So it's still problematic for me. You know, I, I don't want to cause a loss of revenue to CalExpo or High Times, but I don't think we're ready for this, this type of event in Sacramento. And I would prefer that people understand that bringing cannabis into a lawful situation is a process. It takes time, and we're not there yet. And even though Prop 64 passed, and it passed by a margin of 57-42, and generally in District 3, the numbers were fairly similar, it's still fairly close. But many people who wanted adult-use marijuana to be legalized, wanted to bring it, wanted to bring the black market out into the light, and it's not that they envisioned a society or a city, since we can work on the city issues, envision a city where people could walk down the street, you know, inebriated on cannabis, or could, I'm not sure many people conceived that there would be, be an event where north of 10,000 people would be consuming cannabis products. So it's kind of a new world out there, and I would say this, you know, I don't know how the council will vote on this. It'll probably be a split vote, and it'll probably be close. I think if this event goes forward, I think it'll be well-run. The city will gain benefit. CalExpo will gain benefit, and there could be an awful lot of happy people at CalExpo. There, you know, there are potentially issues here, you know? Like I said, we don't have a sobriety test for cannabis, and so that's an awful lot of very happy people who will be exiting CalExpo, and who knows in what condition. Could it cause problems to the city? It could. Will it? I have no idea. That's my, that's my real hang-up here, that we don't have the tools to really understand the ramifications of this. It's been suggested that this could be a pilot event, and no doubt, we can learn from this. It might go by without a hitch, or it might be problematic. We don't really know. But I would rather, frankly, have an ordinance in place and having, have had this conversation about how we would want to envision adult use in the city before we authorize an adult-use event in a public space. So that being said, I would like, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not going to support this resolution. If this doesn't pass, there can still be an event at CalExpo. It would change in nature in that it would not be lawful to, to use adult-use products on-site. So it would change in nature, still be a heck of a good concert. be a heck of a good concert because they have a tremendous lineup. And there could conceivably be medicinal uses, and something like that happened in San Bernardino. Just a couple of weeks ago, the city of San Bernardino, the city council voted 6-0 to not grant a local jurisdiction permission for a similar cannabis cup event. And I'm not saying that we should follow in those footsteps, but I think that we should be very thoughtful about this adult-use scenario because it's a big deal to the city, and it's a big deal in the long term. If we allow it now, that's sort of taken the cork out of the bottle. And if we chose to not allow adult use in public spaces in the future, it's a little harder to put that cork back in the bottle. So I will let my other colleagues speak, but I would say that as councilmember for District Three, I won't support this resolution. I think things will probably come out okay either way. But one thing I do know, that if there are problems with the event, if there's any kind of issues, as councilmember of D3, I'm going to get a lot of calls.
Good. Thank you. Thoughtful remarks, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Sheneer.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Harris. I know he's put a lot of time and being incredibly thoughtful about this. Let me, I'd like to ask Mr. Devlin if we can start just a little bit of a run-up to where we are today and how we got here, because I think there are some challenges, and the timeframe for the council has been extremely short on this one.
Thank you, Councilmember. Absolutely. You're correct. The timeline on this certainly is different and less than ideal. I believe, I guess, I would characterize it as maybe an unalignment of perhaps what local authorization meant and required. But this is all new, and no one has done this before. Cal Expo hasn't done this before. The event organizer hasn't done this before at Cal Expo. And so this is a new process for all of us. And I think it took a little bit more, I think it took some time for us all to kind of get on the same page as to what that local authorization meant, and that it in fact required city council action. And so this is absolutely an item that is late in the hour before you.
And could you, so Mr. Harris mentioned a number of things that applicant, if we, I don't know if we call you an applicant, what do we call you over there, just smiling? The event organizer, thank you, has offered on this. So, Mr. Devlin, you talked about $200,000 in potential tax revenue for the city. And I think that Mr. Harris talked about a number of safety, security items that he's requesting. Could you kind of walk through those? Again, I think that's an important point.
So the 200,000 is obviously an estimate.
We're going to hold you to that, though.
I'll personally make up the difference. But it's based on a number of things. The volume of sales of cannabis on-site by the vendors, as well as the non-cannabis, directly cannabis-related revenues such as sale of booths, ticket sales. So really, a 4% on the cumulative event. The other security precautions that they've committed to is doing an exit check as well as a wristband that could be punched by vendors so that a person could not purchase more than the daily limit of one ounce at the event. Cannabis at this event is likely to be more expensive than at a typical dispensary, certainly not less expensive, due to the cost of really putting on the event and their participation at the event. So vendors will be spending a significant amount of money in order to obtain a booth there.
Great. Thanks. So here's where I am on this, and I really do want to hear from everyone up here. I think it's an important issue. In a perfect world, and Jeff, I think I agree with pretty much everything you said, in a perfect world, we would have had the conversation about open air. I don't really envision us having that for quite a while. We're trying to let things settle in on everything we've done. And as Mr. Devlin said, you know, we weren't following anyone on this, on learning how to do it, but that's been the case for the last two years in this industry. Everything we've done has been a first time on it. In a perfect world, it would have come to lawn ledge, it would come to the council, and we would have the discussion overall on what we should be doing on cafes and things like that. Again, my preference is not to have that discussion for a while. We've got a lot to deal with in making sure what we've done is right. And I'm sure you'll be continuously coming back to this council, tweaking what we've done until we get it right. But we find ourselves in a position where you're trying to support Cal Expo, we're trying to support an industry. We know that a healthy industry is important for many of the things we want to do, public safety being increased, public health being increased because of funding and making sure these things come out of the dark into the light, and then certainly revenue for the city. And just, you know, putting out there the potential of two nights of work or two days of work and $200,000 potentially coming into the coffers of the city, honestly, is very attractive to me because of the needs we had. We had a budget and audit committee meeting today and scrambling for every dollar that we have. We have a $2.8 million surplus next year, and then a $7 million deficit the following year, rising to 18 million, I think, in the third year and going off on that. So where I am on this is I'm going to be supportive of doing this and really doing this as a one-time deal. I appreciate all the staff work to change this from an ongoing piece with the city manager, having that discretion, to really using it as a pilot program or a proof point. I think when we do have the conversation, at some point, we can learn a lot from what happens. I also want to give credit to the event organizers for seeking out and working with some of the nonprofits, like Bill Black. I think that's really important. And I want to hear what others say. I'm happy to make a motion at some point. I'd also like to see us take, and you're going to have to help me on this one, because I don't know if we can direct money coming from a tax, although it's not all tax dollars. The 4% on marijuana would be taxed. The rest is something, maybe a donation. I don't know how you would classify it to the city. But I'd love to see that money go into youth education around cannabis or drug activities for youth. We've talked about that through some permit fees. I think a $200,000 augmentation into our at-risk communities around drug use would be really beneficial. So when we get to a point where we do a motion, I'm happy to do it, or if someone wants to do it, I want to add in kind of direction about where we can spend the proceeds from this.
Okay. Let's hear from the other members, and then you can make a motion. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. So for me, this discussion is not timely. The city has not taken the issue up, and as Jeff stated, therefore, we don't have an existing policy to apply. And I think to act outside of a policy guideline, which would be carefully crafted after this body had a robust discussion on broader policy implications, many of which Jeff has enumerated today, would be a big mistake. I don't think this is an issue in which we should, I don't think this is one of those issues where we'll hear from our constituents on the front end. It'll be after it happens, or after there's a precedent set from doing a one-time deal, that our constituents will say, why did you let that happen? I think this is the type of moment where they're expecting us to make a prudent decision and not act hastily in a vacuum. There are way too many components to consider here to make a decision outside of a policy. I appreciate that you brought Bill Black into the room, but as I have had this conversation before with Malachi, if we're going to bring them into the room, we need to make sure they benefit from the program. And my reading of this is that local entities really can't participate, so without breaking our own rule. That's a problem, and we can't fix that today. We'd have to bring back the other regulation. And that is the danger you take if you hastily do something. And I don't quite understand why we're having to act so hastily. I understand what everyone has said, but there is an article in the Sacramento Business Journal that quotes High Times and their representatives, saying that they submitted permits, all requisite permits, to the city of Sacramento. Either that didn't happen, or it wasn't true. I don't know, but we don't have the permits. Jeff didn't hear about it until less than two weeks ago. I think acting hastily is not in our best interests. I can understand why it's in the best interest of the program. I can understand why it's in the best interest of Cal Expo, but that is different from the city of Sacramento and the people that we represent. This organization, this is not their first event. They've run into similar problems. San Bernardino, same exact thing. The council made a prudent decision not to move forward, and the event didn't happen as it was planned because the council didn't want to be rushed into a position of making a mistake. I think we should follow that lead. It's not clear to me how our dispensaries would benefit from being a part of this. I think, in fact, it could be a major problem for them because it would violate our own city rules right now for them to participate. I'm not clear on what the SAC PD implications would be without breathalyzer, without any plan. The $40,000 to $50,000 of stated city revenue, I could see us spending far more than that just dealing with ramifications to this. It's not, that is not a ticket that, to me, is valuable enough. We're not going to close the $18 million gap by approving one event at Cal Expo. We would be far better off to put this on a future agenda, have a discussion about what we're going to do about consumption of adult cannabis outdoors in the city of Sacramento, decide what we want that to look like, and then allow events that fall within those guidelines to happen. This issue is far too important to rush. I think a one-off could put us in the position of having a precedent, even if we said we weren't setting a precedent. You can bet the next group that comes along would say, but you did it before. I want to support Jeff. It's his district. I hope if I ever come to this council and there is an event that wants to be in my district, and I have questions and concerns and am not ready to approve that in my district, that you all would vote with me. And so the concerns that he has enumerated, the concerns that I have about this being in his district, I look forward to the discussion with this council, but that discussion is not happening today, and so I am a no vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I almost hesitate to weigh in because I think this is tough in a lot of ways, and I think it's also easy in some ways. In the tough ways, I think that it's been made abundantly clear that the timing here is, what I would say, is less than ideal. And partially, I missed last week's council meeting, but there was a decision to postpone the decision from last week, maybe because you wanted me here. I would have preferred that you made it while I was gone.[1401.11][1401.11][laughter] But that being said, we've been dealing with an illegal cannabis operation in my district lately. It's a pop-up. They rented a property. They did not get permits. They did not follow the rules. When we asked them to cease and desist, they said they weren't going to stop. They showed up here last week and complained. They've decided to begin attacking myself and city authorities for doing our jobs and representing our neighborhoods. They are clearly not what I would call good actors. And on the other hand here, I think we have people trying to do the right thing, follow the rules. Cal Expo has been a great partner to the city repeatedly. It's a major employer, major site that drives revenue for the city. Rick Pickering, I know you're here, and you've done a great job helping us, especially when we were trying to find a home for SAC Republic and making that work. That was a difficult thing. And I think we trust Cal Expo. We trust Rick. I've spoken to a couple of your board members, and I think that they've made a persuasive case about your competent ability to manage this. One of the questions that I asked was about transportation. There is no public transportation access to the site, and I was worried about people driving under the influence, which is a major concern. I do understand that the event has a partner with Uber, partnership with Uber, and that will allow for people to get discounted rides. And I believe you'll be doing a lot of education to attendees about how to travel safely to and from the event, should people decide to consume and need transit, which is, I think, important. I also like the idea that Bill Black, Malachi, and Sarah Health, Kai Yang, that they stood up here and supported it. I've been extremely empathetic, and I would say supportive, of the work that Malachi has done to ensure that we have equity in our programs. This is the first time, other than when it was an event, that the equity advocates came to us, that they've supported something that wasn't their program necessarily. But I think that it's a sign of credibility, and it's a sign that the event promoters, event organizers, whatever you want to call yourself, have been listening. And, you know, when we so clearly have many people who want to flout the law, who don't want to be regulated, who don't want to come in out of the black market, and we have a chance to show people that by following the rules, you can actually find that partnership, I think it's important. Another tough issue is just on-site consumption generally. It's been something that we have not been ready to tackle, so I think that is a very fair criticism from my two colleagues who've spoken. I have some serious long-term concerns about how we manage that, particularly because a lot of the locations may end up in my district. And so I put myself in the position of, if this were inside the Golden One Center, how would we handle it? If we had the leadership of the Kings here asking us to permit the event, how would we handle that? I honestly don't know, but I think there is a question about fairness. There's also the question of the unfairness of being put in this position to have to make a tough decision, but it's what we ran to do for the most part. It is fun to cut ribbons and do other things, though. So I think in the end, the only thing that I haven't gotten answer on, and it is something that I'm struggling with right now, is Councilmember Sheneer's request that we move outside of the budget policy and assign the revenue somewhere. We, a few years ago, passed a policy that we wouldn't do those things, and that we would only allocate revenue within the budget process, either at mid-year or the actual official budget process. So what I would say is, I would be willing to, after hearing the rest of my colleagues speak, support a motion that would hold revenues that can be identified from the event aside, but that we need to develop a policy. Because, again, listening to Malachi and the equity advocates, we have to tackle the discussion about what we're going to do with marijuana revenue generally. And I think this goes in that conversation, and we shouldn't spend this money on anything in particular until we set a policy. And that policy should answer their call for support and for resources, and to make sure that the community is lifted up in a way that the community wants. And so if we don't specify where it's going to go, but we just ask the staff to hold it, until we come up with that policy and come up with a way to deal with it in the budget process, I'd be okay. Okay. So depending on what the rest of my colleagues say, I'm not going to make a motion, but I'll listen. And it's virtually against my DNA to not support the council member for the area and not to support my friend Jeff. So the people who are doing this event, if I end up voting for it, you better not disappoint me, or there will be hell to pay. High hell to pay.
Okay. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam City Attorney, I don't understand the prohibition of local dispensaries not being able to participate. How did that come about?
Councilmember Carr, I'd like to ask Senior Deputy City Attorney Steve V. Tagaki to come up and explain that.
Councilmember Carr, Steve V. Tagaki from the State Journey's office. The prohibition in the code is for our permitted dispensaries to not operate other than the site that they were permitted for. And that's been part of our regulations since we started this with the dispensaries originally back in 2010, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pickering, Rick, I've been getting a lot of emails.
Mind not, Mr. Pickering. Mind not, Mr. Pickering. You're on the hot seat. Welcome.
I've been getting a lot of email, and essentially it goes like this. What are they thinking at Cal Expo to have a women, a girls volleyball tournament going on at the same time as we're having a cannabis outdoor adult use event?
Absolutely, Councilman. I'm glad that you called me today to talk this through a little bit. Northern California Girls Volleyball Tournament has been a traditional event hosted at Cal Expo for a number of years, bringing a number of people to the local community to participate. Before Cal Expo embarked on seriously considering the proposal from High Times, we contacted the promoter of the girls volleyball tournament. Again, we have a long-term relationship with them. We put this forward to them, what would you think about this? What would your families think, your players think, your coaches think? People attending to watch the girls play, what issues might we face? Her response, it was quite fascinating. She said, "Rick, we have actually faced cannabis in the same structures, in the same areas with other tournaments, particularly when we're in San Jose." Said, "So we're familiar with it? It's not a big deal to us? How far away will it be?" So we actually worked to put it further away than what the law would require. Current law would require six hundred feet to a thousand feet separation between a school and cannabis. We initially designed the event to be more than a thousand feet, I'm sorry, feet, six hundred feet or a thousand feet. We designed this event to be more than a thousand feet away from where the girls volleyball activity will be taking place. Understand, Cal Expo is an eight-hundred-acre facility, three hundred and seventy-eight acres of developed property, four hundred acres plus of the American River Parkway. But on the developed property, there's more than a hundred structures. We regularly host multiple events on a weekend. We have more than five hundred event days a year, more than a hundred distinctive individual events. So we strategically design events to have their own parking lots, as well as to have their own admission gates. So girls volleyball has their area to park in. On the center to eastern edge of the property, they will be in the pavilion, which many of you know is the big livestock show during the state fair. Buildings A, B, and C, which you would know as the county exhibits, and the state fair kitchen. The cannabis event is limited to a small twelve-acre plot of ground. Twelve acres may seem large to a homeowner, but to an eight-hundred-acre facility, the twelve acres is what you would know at fairtime as the main carnival lot, where the monorail poles are at. So that event is taking place. So we coordinated this, discussed it with the girls volleyball promoter in advance, thinking she knew her customers and her participants much better than we do. She had no issue with this. When we approached, we brought this information back to High Time. They said, absolutely, they have kids, girls' daughters that play in volleyball. They understand. There'd be additional signage. This event, cannabis event, is twenty-one years old and up. The fenced-in area, the twelve-acre area I mentioned, the outdoor area, not only is it fenced in, but the entire fencing is screened, so it can't be viewed by, let's say, girls volleyball player or anyone else. They are now closer to fifteen hundred feet to two thousand feet, how they've changed the event just in recent days, so they're even further away from girls volleyball. Not that you ask, but we have the Kentucky Derby we're airing this weekend, and we also have Friday night and Saturday night will be our final wrap-up to our Honda Race Meet at the racetrack. At the same time, we have employee training at Raging Waters taking place that will open in another week or so. So yes, we're used to multiple events. We have our own police department. Would like to correct for the records, since sometimes people read things in the press and think that's factual. Sometimes they simply regurgitate what they pull out of a different article. We have slightly over a hundred police officers that we employ. About fifty percent of them work for other police agencies in the general Sacramento region, and then come and work for us as well. We appreciate their expertise. The other fifty percent don't work in those agencies. They're all post-certified. They're all current. They're all trained. Plus, we have more than a hundred security guards that are state security. And then this group is also bringing in a private security company that will be inside the event. It's twenty-one and up, so there's ID checks. Cal Expo will handle the bag checks going in. We'll search the bags and handle the metal detectors, that type of thing. Frankly, councilmember folks, there are more, our personal experience was we contacted another large number of venues that have hosted medicinal cannabis events in California. We were not able to find people that came forward and said that there was a major driving under the influence issue, that people were purchasing more than one ounce and trying to drive on the public streets. Our police department does a great job of researching. We think we have a fantastic track record. Could something happen? We've all witnessed tragedies happen. Mistakes can happen with people. But from an event point of view, more than two million people a year come through the Cal Expo property, multiple events. They do it in a very safe manner. I'm happy when the Kings Arena hits a two million a year mark, and when the Convention Center hits a two million a year mark. So yes, we're in District Three. We love District Three. They're great neighbors. We're one of the largest employers. We are one of the key employers of young people during the state fair. So we're here in the event business, so we thought of these things in advance. Will somebody be concerned and think that this doesn't make sense? Absolutely. And I've probably taken more than enough time to over-answer the question.
Yep. You answered. Thank you. Did you have a follow-up?
Yes.
No, it's fine.
How was you, though, Rick? But with someone from High Times. So the burning question is, how long have you been planning this event, and why did you come to us so late?
So, sir, I apologize, first of all.
Your name, can you identify yourself?
My name is Adam Levin, and I'm the chairman and CEO of High Times. First of all, thank you so much, your mayor and city council members for hearing us today and spending time with us, Mr. Councilman Harris, yesterday, and for your concerns.
Could you pull the mic down a little?
Yes, sir. Sorry. I'm short. Councilman Carr, part of our process in dealing with this, I think, was an error in understanding the legislative process and who can give permission. I pride myself on, and my team prides ourselves, on working with municipalities, and we have a longstanding relationship with working with the city of San Bernardino for the last six years. They passed legislation nine days prior to our event, which changed it, and has to do with some political snafus, not necessarily our events, sir. But back to your question, sir, about our timeliness, I think we thought we were going to have the approvals and had sought the right approval process. Unfortunately, we came up in error and worked to rectify the situation as close as we can. Obviously, the Bureau of Cannabis Control and Lori Ajax's office set new regulations that control the permitting process with the cannabis industry in the state of California that went into effect as of January one. We've been working closely with her office and the BCC to find the right venue, the right permitting, and the right municipality, so we can work, so we can create a cohesive partnership with the municipality, sir.
When you had your event in San Jose, did you have to get permission from the city?
We have not done an event. That wasn't us, sir.
It wasn't your event?
No, sir. That they mentioned.
You had any of these events anywhere?
We have had many of these events throughout the state and throughout the world and throughout the country. And there's new regulations that require municipal approval. I think one of the unique things about the Cal Expo and several other of the state fairgrounds have been that they're somewhat autonomous land, because they're owned by the state. So there's been some miscommunication and guidance via municipalities. We're now obviously all understanding the new regulations and working to get the city council's permission. You know, so we're trying everything in our power to put up a great concert and follow all the laws. Back to what Councilman Hanson was speaking about, we are trying our best to go through the permitting process that provides the city council with all the information that they need, and I apologize about the lack of timeliness.
And how long have you been planning this event?
I believe about five months, four months probably. I don't want to misguide you, but probably for the last four months, we've been working with Cal Expo and different people within the city office.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Harris, and I'm going to make a couple comments.
Oh, I didn't finish yet.
You weren't done. I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
I was just done with asking him a question.
Got it. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I wanted to make sure I understood the grant that was going to be granted from this event to a local organization.
That's perhaps a question better for the event organizer.
Okay. Well, we weren't finished.
Councilman, I'm Jason Kinney. We're residents of District Three. We're for California Strategies here in Sacramento, representing High Times. The High Times, in the history of their event organizing, has always made a strong commitment to local social justice and community empowerment organizations consistent with the equity programs in the local jurisdictions. Same is true here in Sacramento. Early on in the process, they identified a certain amount of revenue that could be used for community groups that were active in social justice and economic development programs, particularly among communities disproportionately harmed by the failed war on our previous policies of prohibition and criminalization of marijuana. Recently, they have made entreaties or had meetings with various organizations. They have committed to a total of one hundred and forty thousand dollars total in community grants to organizations. Part of that, we're coordinating with Bill Black Coalition. There are some other organizations that are involved in economic development and career pathways programs in Sacramento that we're coordinating with and starting that process. But that'll be the total, one hundred and forty thousand in community programs overall.
Is that going to be included in the permit that we grant you? If we grant you a permit, then you do that afterwards?
Well, I mean, it's a voluntary program, and we've talked about the possibility of an MOU. I don't know that, not being a city attorney, I don't know what the right process is. But it is a commitment that they made that they will follow through on as they have in every jurisdiction that they've had a successful event.
Okay. Thank you. It's always troubling to me when we have a big issue that's in a council district, and the council member is advocating for one thing, and how much deference do we give? I think it's one of the first questions I ask you, Mr. Mayor. How much deference do we give to the council member? And I think, in some cases, it's clear. Like Eric had a real estate office that was going to, an eight-hundred-square-foot real estate office, that was going to go in, and his community members were totally against it, the ones who came, anyway, and he was for it, and I felt it was right to give deference in that case. On some other ones, some big projects that we all know that I'm not going to mention, I didn't think it was necessary to give deference because it was such a huge project. It impacted more than just that district. It impacted the whole city. And Jeff, this is how I'm looking at this thing for Cal Expo. It's a big project. It has more impact than just District Three. This is a citywide issue, in my estimation. I am not concerned about the local dispensaries not getting into this expo. And the reason I'm not is because they've had a monopoly ever since we've passed the ordinance, and none of the communities that were so heavily impacted by cannabis being illegal had a chance to get a dispensary. And we're just fighting now to get those people into that business. So we got thirty groups now who have the monopoly, and I would advocate for expanding that at a later date. I think Councilmember Harris did a great job on getting to some things that I wouldn't even think of, like having a ban to determine how much cannabis has been purchased, point-of-sale transactions. We don't have a sobriety test now for anything. I don't know how that has a huge impact. But I guess the biggest thing is, we have outdoor use in public spaces right now. It's going on right now. We just had code enforcement in a couple of weeks ago, telling us about a couple of outdoor events that they had busted. And the whole push is to try to bring this into the light and get the illegal growers and the illegal events out. I am willing to try this as a pilot. I think we'll learn more as we go along. It will inform our conversations as we move along. And as much as I hate to disagree with Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Ashby, I hardly ever disagree with her, that I just think it's all right to do this, have a pilot program one time, learn from it, and that will inform our ordinance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Harris, and then I'm going to make a comment.
So Larry, I won't hold it against you. You know, this is a tough decision, and it is absolutely true that Cal Expo is a regional amenity, and this isn't really so specific to D3. So I appreciate those comments. But, you know, this is a policy decision, and I know you're a stickler for policy, Larry. We are negating our ability to craft policy carefully, I think, by accepting this event. This is state property. If it wasn't state property with our current ordinance, we would not even be having this conversation. It would not be possible to have this event if it was city or county property. It's only because of this extraneous circumstance and it being state property that we can consider moving forward with this. We decided to regulate cannabis so that we would retain local control of our policies and our ordinance. And to a certain extent, by being pushed in a time fashion about this, I feel uncomfortable in terms of expressing local control. You know, one last thing, well, two things. The monopoly, you know, about our local dispensaries having a monopoly, inviting operators from elsewhere in the state isn't going to help with that monopoly, or help any of those issues that you brought up. But one last thing I want to leave you with. Once these people leave the boundaries of Cal Expo, Cal Expo has a great police force, and I have no doubt that High Times and Rick, working together in Cal Expo, can run a good event. That's not my issue. But once those people leave the lot at Cal Expo, and if they are under the influence, they're our issue. They belong to the city of Sacramento at that point, and our CDPD. And at that point, you know, Cal Expo has no control. How many people will use Uber? Unknown. My guess would be a couple of hundred out of ten thousand. But, you know, this is something that should be considered, so I remain a no vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I thought Councilmember Carr's comments were extremely compelling, and, you know, I also understand the issue of deference on this issue. But the point about some of the illegal activity happening, and Councilmember Hanson has been having it recently here in the central city, but I think the point about regulating the market and trying to figure out how to do it correctly and timing it right, and that's been my hesitation consistently about the open-air public use, or any kind of conversation about public use. Just from my experience in the Power Inn area, we've had these pop-up illegal, you know, events. And part of it is because there's a demand for consumers to do this kind of stuff. So the issue we have to really tackle is, what will that policy be? And if we, you know, this concept of a pilot, I saw the last week's resolution that would have allowed this to be carte blanche, and I was completely a no at that point. The fact that it may be only a one-time situation where we can look at this and see what the impacts are, because I don't want any more illegal pop-up situations happening in the warehouse district, open areas, where there isn't any security. I was surprised, I was, you know, actually pleasantly surprised to hear all of the levels of security involved at Cal Expo and what goes in there. Now that I think about it, every time I go to the state fair, it reminds me. But that is a much better situation than some of the, you know, chain-link fence shenanigans that we see happening around the city, and so trying to control that. As far as for me, I, you know, any revenue that's collected by the city, I think it should be at every level, from parking to sales to leases, every single piece of that. And we do need to focus it, I think, clearly in our youth, whether it's a set aside, and we figured that out, but it should be specifically focused on youth, into Councilman Carr's point, to affect communities that have been affected historically by our past policies, as had been mentioned. So I, you know, I was much more compelled now by Councilman Carr's points on that, but I think there needs to be a deeper conversation about what is the future use of any kind of long-term business that looks at the public use. This may be a point to get data points on what that is. use. This may be a point to get data points on what that is. And at that point, you know, very hesitantly, I'm, I'm more now willing to support motion if the proceeds go to youth in that. And now also, I think there's going to be a lot of people watching to see that the, the promoters make a commitment. I don't know what kind of commitments are made out to, to the, the community, but that those are followed through.
Okay. Almost time for a vote. Couple of comments here. You know, in terms of deference, which we all, I think that's a very important principle because all, all the members represent their districts zealously and, and very effectively. But sometimes what a council member does adroitly is oppose an item out of principle while at the same time negotiating for a much better agreement for the district and the city. And I'm not, actually, Councilmember Harris, I know he genuinely is opposed to this, but I also feel like his work has led to High Times agreeing to follow the city ordinance to the T, without exception. And so because you have agreed to do that, I, I can support this one-time exception as well. And in terms of the, the budget issue, because I know that it's a little odd mechanically, but I think what the council's asking for our finance director, our budget director, is to reflect the anticipated revenue from this event as an addition into the budget, the 2019 budget. And then for the direction, at least from a lot of the council members, is for the Budget and Fiscal Committee then to think about a $200,000 investment in the appropriate way out of the FY19 budget into, into youth. Because, you know, the money, the revenue's either real or it isn't. And it's, if it's not currently anticipated in the budget, it needs to be accounted for in the budget, and then we can handle appropriating, appropriating the money. My issue, though, is different. It's Mr. Pickering again, if, if, if you, if you might come on up here. It's, High Times, I can support this one-time because the company has agreed to all of the city conditions and to comply with the city ordinance. But my issue long-term is more about the relationship between the state and the city and Cal Expo and the city, which I know has been largely good. But I remember a time before you were general manager when, I have very bad memories of gun and doll shows at Cal Expo. And I, I think about the gun show loopholes that have been a, a national controversy about the ability to get around either local or state or federal ordinances in, in, in selling guns, as an example, at the state fairgrounds. So my question is this. You got into a squeeze here because of the timing and the fact that the proprietor and Cal Expo did not come forward to the city in a, in a timely fashion. And so we're willing here, I think the votes will be there, to make an exception here, conditioned upon complying, complying with the city ordinances. Is Cal Expo, when it comes to all of its uses here, willing to comply with the city ordinances in terms of, in terms of uses? And again, it may be an old narrative, but I remember it very well. And it was, and, you know, we passed significant gun regulation ordinances in Sacramento. And then, you know, Cal Expo kind of did its thing. It was a moneymaker. And, you know, it wasn't a good look. And there's a lot of great things that go on at a Cal Expo, including the state fair. And I want to know that, whether or not this, whether we're setting a good precedent here in terms of Cal Expo following city, city custom and practice and our ordinances.
Well, certainly a valid question. We appreciate that, Your Honor. But I also work for a board of directors that I would need to talk to about that. I'm not sure who's here in the audience, but I'm probably the only, maybe one of the few people in the room that's ever been deposed by the NRA because the Alameda County Board of Supervisors banned the possession of firearms and ammunition on their county property, which was the fairgrounds. So I, I probably have a lot more information on restraint of trade and how those lawsuits worked up through, through the federal courts that we could talk about offline.
Okay. You know, I guess the, the broader point, and it's, you know, Jeff Harris, I think cites the issue of the republic and a lot of great work that we do together. I want to make sure that, that the state facility within our city respects the local requirements here on, on all matters. And I appreciate you taking, taking that back to your board.
And they may ask if you would indemnify us if we get sued by somebody because we don't do their show. That, that's all, that's part of that discussion.
Wait a minute here. You kind of, well, you open up a can of worms here because it does beg the question, Madam City Attorney, about, God forbid, there is, something goes wrong here. Is the city going to be on, on the hook because we've approved this here tonight? Or, or is the indemnity go the other way? Is Cal Expo indemnifying the city because we agreed to make an exception to, because we agreed to make an exception to the fact that they didn't, they didn't come to us in a timely fashion?
There's no indemnity provision as part of the permit procedure, Mayor.
No, I, I understand.
We would not be indemnified in the event that a potential plaintiff would file an action against the city based on an event that occurs from their attendance, related to their attendance.
What's that, Steve? Would we, well, would we have liability?
That would depend on the facts, Mayor.
Are we giving approval to this by, by granting this temporary permit in that way? Exactly the thing that I, this is me off about Cal Expo here. Attitude. Same thing. There wasn't three of you in the bus pissed off about it. What? Yeah.
So the, so the best answer I can give tonight without doing more research on this is that we, in general, would have permit immunity because what you're approving is an event, but it's...
Okay. I want to be clear with Mr. Pickering here because I, I didn't like the answer, sir. We are not going to indemnify you for those uses that you forbid because it's the right thing to do and consistent with the ordinances and the laws of the city. And if anything, it should go the other way, is, is my point.
And I humbly apologize for that statement. Our desire is to be a good neighbor in this community.
Good. Thank you. Vice Mayor? I, I'm ready to, you want to move it, Jay? Or Steve, you want to move it?
I just quickly, you know, my comment was, I thought, hopefully clear. I wouldn't support the item if we did sort of budgeting from the dais. And I, I think Mr. Chenier agreed to compromise on that. And so I heard some backtracking in a couple of the comments. But so if, if we do decide we're going to put the money to youth without having gone through a conversation about how to do that fairly, then I will vote against that.
I'm saying we're going through the budget, you go through the budget process.
No, we have to, what I'm saying is we should set a policy for how we're going to deal with marijuana equity, to reserve this, these funds until we have that conversation.
Okay. Well, let's hear what the motion is.
So do you want to have Angelique speak first or no? All right. I'll, I'll move the staff recommendation with any revenues to the city being set aside to work through the budget process. My own personal desire on that would be to see it going through to youth programs. And if there's a majority of either our budget and audit committee or the council that wishes to do that, I think that would be great.
Okay, but no, no strings attached. Okay? Councilmember Ashby.
I just want to point out that I think that the question placed on the city attorney at the dais is exactly why you don't do this in a rushed scenario. That it's such an important question. Is there indemnification? Is there not indemnification? First event in the city of Sacramento where adults can consume cannabis outside. I didn't even know there was a girls' volleyball event at the same location at the same time. We, we're walking with an unclear answer, and folks clearly appear to be ready to vote yes. This could be a very big, very costly pilot lesson.
Yeah. Councilmember Carr.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure, Mr. City Manager, if this is approved, that the $140,000 that has been pledged actually happens, and we know exactly where that money is going. So we would get a report back. I would think we could put that as a condition of the permit if it's approved?
You know, I'll ask Mr. Devlin to come up because I'm not familiar with the structure of that $140,000 commitment and, and whether that's going to come through the city or directly from the event organizer.
It's not through the city.
No. I, I think it's outside of our process.
Yeah, the $140,000 is outside of our process.
That is. These are, these, these are philanthropic donations that are confirmed and consistent with all the prior events. They've always delivered on every commitment they've made. That happens to be the number that they attached to this event on the social justice and equity side.
That's different from the 200,000, approximate $200,000 tax revenue that will go through the budget process.
Right. That's city revenue. That's over above that. Yeah.
Very good.
What's the time?
Question is, how do we make sure that we, that actually happens?
Well, again, we are open to having an MOU with the organizations. We've talked about different ways of facilitating. Like I said, they've done 19, they've done 20 events in the past. I think 12 have had philanthropic contributions or community organization contributions attached to it. They've made on every, they've made, they've...
Let's put it this way. If they don't, if they don't follow through on the $140,000, and they're not coming back here a second time.
Right. And I'd make the point that the, the whole approach from the organization has been this one, they were building a long-term partnership with the city and with this facility. So I promise you, on behalf of the organization, we're going to make do on those commitments.
Jason, what's the timing on the $140,000?
Well, it's part of the anticipated revenue from the event. So I assume, Adam, what's the appropriate timeline for delivering on the contributions?
So if we could find, at this moment, why don't we see if you can report back to this council through a letter?
That makes sense, and I'm happy to make sure that happens.
Certainly within the month of May. Is that good?
Okay. In the month of May.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Let's, there's not, has there been a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Carr. Let's call the roll on the item, please.
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg. The item passes.
Okay. That concludes the agenda for this evening. Are there council ideas and questions before we adjourn? Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Just trying to get to them really quickly. Okay, number of events.
Go ahead. Well, let's wait a second, Jay. If people could kind of clear out quietly, we'd sure appreciate it. We still have some business to do.
So Wednesday, May 2, Freeport Boulevard Safe Routes to School Work Group. That's at Hollywood Park Elementary at 6:30. Thursday, May 3, is the big day of giving that we heard about earlier today. Thursday, May 3, is Oak Park Neighborhood Association Monthly Meeting, 5:30 to 8. Friday, the 4th, we're doing a Food Truck Mania at Belle Coolidge Park from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Friday, also at 5 o'clock, the Oak Park Peace Walk. This month will be at Shiloh Baptist Church at 3565 Ninth Avenue. First Friday, Oak Park along Broadway, 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Saturday, May 5, is the opening day of the Oak Park Farmers Market at 9:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. Saturday, May 5, is the Cinco de Mayo Festival on Franklin Boulevard, and that's at 5383 Franklin Boulevard from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m. And the reason I'm wearing my bicycling jersey today, this is, May is Bike Month. We had a kickoff this morning. I want to encourage everyone to sign up, do your miles this month, and we'll hopefully get out for a ride together. Thank you.
Councilman Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, May the 5th, we have a free shredding event. It's going to take place at John F. Kennedy High School from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. Since the tax season is over, now's a perfect time to shred all those unneeded documents and keep them out of the hands of any potential identity thieves. You can bring your documents, your hard drives, your CDs for, for secure shredding. It's free. And any donation that you'd like to make to help the JFK Marching Band on their upcoming trip to DC will be deeply appreciated. Once again, that's this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 at John F. Kennedy. Also, John F. Kennedy is having a rummage sale. You may consider it trash. I may consider it treasure. Whichever way you decide, they're looking for you to bring your annual rummage, your rummage to the corner of Gloria and Florin Road. Sports equipment, furniture, clothing, houseware, books, games, et cetera. There's something for everyone. Proceeds will be used to assist the band with their trip to DC in the Memorial Day Parade. And then finally, the Sacramento River Parkway Cleanup is going to take place at Goshen Bend Park on May the 12th. You can join District Team 7 and the Parks Commissioner, Devin Lavelle, for a fun morning of cleanup on the Sacramento River Parkway. It's going to start at Goshen Bend Park, and all the tools, bags, and supplies will be supplied and provided for you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Geta.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Anika Jessie, who is our new District 6 representative on the newly-formed Active Transportation Commission. She is not only a board member on the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association and their Land Use Committee, but is a bike and pedestrian transportation planner for Caltrans. So we're getting some real expertise on our Active Transportation Commission. Couple of events coming up here. Hopefully you'll join us next week for the joint meeting of the Avondale and Glen Elder and Southeast Village Neighborhood Association on Wednesday, May 9, 6:00 p.m. at the George Sims Community Center. Supervisor Patrick Kennedy, myself, and also Emily Halken will be talking about homeless issues and our efforts that we're using to, to address the Sacramento homeless situation. We'll also have the Keep Stockton Boulevard Clean on Saturday, May 19, at 9:00 a.m. We're joining a number of community partners with the Stockton Boulevard Partnership for the annual Keep the Stockton Boulevard Clean. The Tahoe Park Pancake Breakfast, love the pancakes here, on Saturday, May 19. Love these pancakes. May 19 at 9:00 a.m. at Tahoe Elementary. Come join and support your local school. And a good day for community and fellowship. At 9:00 a.m., we'll be flipping pancakes. And also on May 16, the College Glen Food Trucks Event at the Glen, Glenbrook Park. Come out and enjoy the, all the improvements at Glenbrook Park. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you all. Nothing more to come before the city council. We are adjourned. Thank you.